Moving on to item F, minutes of previous meeting, minutes from the 4/28/2020 meeting. Mr. Brayden.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Donarda. Second one, Mr. Donarda. Any discussion? Please call the ball.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Drayce. Mr. Kelch. Mr. Donarda. Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item G, request to address counsel on agenda items. We have one request this evening.
Good evening, my fine residents of Norwood, Ohio. All of our community leadership, city leaderships, all of the residents, families, and our seniors. Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, beautiful community of Norwood, Ohio. I want to take a moment, as the entire country grieves and mourns. I want to make sure that we understand that as we as a community begin to come together and try to address these very sensitive, sensitive issues. It's one thing to say we want to do something, but it's another thing when we do it in such a way that everybody feels included and they feel a part of it. And myself, like many of you, I know your families are grieving. This is not a black thing. This is not a white thing. This is a people thing, all over the country. But what I'm encouraging all of us to do is as our committees meet and as we sit down to address very sensitive issues, do not leave out the ones that really can tell you what it's like to feel alienated, to feel like some of our leadership attitudes are so arrogant. And I'll give you an example. When you're addressing what society calls as black issues, and you walk into a room and you see just several blacks, and you don't have the heart, the thought, or the mindset to at least come over and say, hello, how are you? Anything that comes out of your mouth after that seems very disingenuous to people who feel like you don't care anyway. So as you all begin to help certain agendas, I want to make sure that we are looking at the heart of the matter, and a simple hello really says where you are. God bless you all. I believe our community is moving in a great direction. I'm very pleased with the changes that have happened, but at the same time, I continue to see the same arrogance. And if you don't believe me, check your own heart. If you want to address something, be real about it. Be about it. Don't talk about it, because people are really hurting. I want everybody to be safe in my community. I'll save the rest for later. I realize that we have a new time restraint, and it's always been in place, but I guess I haven't abided by it. So I think they put in the Pastor James rule. I don't know if the mayor's sent Gabbert to chokehold me on that one, but I want to be in order. So God bless you all. I'll be back later to address my other issues, but let's be real. And don't get it twisted, Shortcake. People are really, really looking at you, and you're not going to be able to lie your way out of it. So let's be real, and let's come together in love and transparency, and let the arrogance go, leadership. Say hello to somebody that you don't like, or maybe if you don't think they like you. I'm just saying.
Thank you, Pastor James. Moving on to item H, report from Norwood Police Chief Kramer on community relations. Chief Kramer.
Mr. Mirko, how would you like me to start? I know you sent me some questions. I do have some prepared remarks I think Mr. Moore has sent to you. I can start with those if you like, or...
Whatever order you want to go.
Sorry. Let me start saying this. I understand with the events in Minneapolis, it's kind of precipitated a lot of this. And I can tell you, before I get on to my prepared remarks, that I don't know any police officer in the city of Norwood, and I don't know any police officer at all. My time up?
Pastor James, that time was over.
Am I borrowing somebody?
Let me go again.
I don't know any police officer at all that was not disgusted by what they saw there. That does not represent law enforcement. I believe what you saw is the exception rather than the rule, so I just want to start off with saying that. So Mr. Moore had sent a few questions to you, you forward into me. So I can go over those, and I'll be available for any further questions. One of the questions that he asked was he wanted to know what our practices were for proactively building relationships in the community. And I can go over a few things. We've done events. Every year, we do a shop with the cop. We do first responders night, although we won't do that this year with the COVID-19. I'm sure we'll still do shop with the cop. We will not do first responders night this year, but we've done that every other year. We do a Phila Cruiser food drive. We've done junior police academy. We have a citizens on patrol. We have a citizens advisory group. Those are all things that we have worked to give residents and community partners an opportunity to become more involved with an Orville Police Department and to have a voice. We also have plans in the near future to implement a citizens police academy and also a neighborhood watch. So those are some of the things that we've done to build relationships in the community. I don't know if that's the kind of answer that he was looking for, but that's the kind of answer that I have. His next question was, do we have a system or systems for reviewing and coaching officers? He used the words "with a checkered past," and I understand what he means. What I can tell you is, we do. We have a software program that we've used since probably 2013. It's called Guardian Tracking, and in that system, we enter all information on an officer, good and bad. You know, if they get an attaboy, that goes in that system. If they mess up, that goes in that system. Any use of force, any pursuits, tardiness, policy violations, at-fault accidents, all of that goes in that system. And we have it set up at, after a certain number, that it will kick off a flag. It's called an early warning system, and that gives us an opportunity to review the entries that were made for that officer and determine if there is a problem or not. So that's what we've had set up since 2013. You know, I'll take questions after I've done going all over this, if you have some. He asked about the extent to which officers train on matters of diversity and de-escalation. So I don't, not all officers have been through specific de-escalation training, but many have. And I don't know that I've seen training out there to specifically label de-escalation training, but we have sent officers to verbal judo, which is essentially a de-escalation training. Additionally, we, through our training, we train officers on de-escalation. Our trainers go through scenarios that require officers to try to make the situation come to an end peacefully. You know, we have actors doing the scenarios, but they take them through different scenarios and throw different stuff at them each time, and you know, no one is the same. So we do do that. You know, when we talk about de-escalation, I can tell you in 2019, we had eight uses of force. That was all the force that we used in 2018. And that's involving more than 25,000 citizens encounters. I think that speaks for how good our officers do with the escalation training. This year so far, we have had five uses of force, so we're right along those same lines. In years past, we have had, I think I counted up to 22, probably with an average of around 12 to 15, so. And then he asked about diversity training. So we, some officers have had some diversity training. Actually, we have a bias-based policing policy that requires training on that policy every two years. That training can be a matter of reviewing the policy and answering questions about it, having discussions, but most officers have gone above that. There was training done on diversity, inclusion by OPADA in 2018, and the majority of our officers went through that training. But there is no, just so we're clear, we fall under the Ohio Peace Officers Training Academy, their policies, and they have no standards. We meet their standards, and their only standard this year is that we complete firearms training. And I know that they're working on that. In 2018, they had standards, but they couldn't fund it in 2019, and that doesn't mean that we don't train our officers. We send officers to other training outside of OPADA. There's a lot of good training organizations out there. Public Agency Training Council, to name one. Butler Tech Police Academy puts on lots of classes. So when I tell you that OPADA doesn't require it, it doesn't mean we don't. We absolutely require additional training. OPADA doesn't require that, once an officer gets certified with their impact weapons, which is essentially your baton, that they don't have to do anymore, but we do. We require that he receive ongoing training on that. His next question was about our body camera policy. And I emailed John, asked him specifically what he was looking for, so I just made some notes of the questions that he asked me, and he stated, or to answer his questions, all officers that are working patrol will wear a body cam if one is available. We tried having detail officers wear them. When I say detail, I mean officers that are working Rookwood or Krogers or Norwood High School basketball games, but we kept, they're used almost nonstop, so they got to, obviously they have to download and charge, so if we have enough, they will take one. Generally, we don't have enough for detail officers. Is that still correct, Mark? He asked about the policies, when we can turn them on or off. Generally speaking, in a, if they have an encounter with a citizen, that body cam should be running. Sometimes they forget, it does happen. And I don't, I don't ever want an officer to put themselves at danger. I don't want that to be their first thought, especially on a critical run. But it is supposed to be, if they have a citizen's encounter, they are supposed to activate the body cam and turn it on. It can be turned off, like if it's at a crime scene, it wants the detectives or detective supervisor comes on scene, they can request it could be turned off as they discuss certain aspects of the case. He asked about reviewing of the footage. The footage is reviewed by supervisors monthly. They're supposed to review randomly three body cam footages of each officer, and some, I think day shift, I believe their lieutenant does that on night shift. I believe the night shift lieutenant maybe does some, but has the sergeants do the other. But it is reviewed, and then Lieutenant Murphy, as part of his duties of giving footage out to the prosecutor's office and defense attorneys, he reviews them all the time. Talked about how long we keep it for. Footage that's not flagged, so if an officer doesn't have something that they're like, I need this, if it's not flagged for, as needed for criminal or administrative purposes, it's purged after 90 days. Asked if officers have access to the footage, they do have access to the footage. They can review that footage before they complete a use of force report or a pursuit report, any of that, so that they can make sure that, you know, memory is not always good, and that way they can look at that and see exactly what happened. And he asked about the number of times that we have used it to resolve complaints. I don't know, but we've used it a number of times to resolve citizens' complaints, or you know, just to figure if there was a problem or not, so. I think those were his four questions. I'll answer one more, something he didn't ask, but I think is important, is he didn't ask like what citizens can do to help. And what I would say is they can get involved if they can. Look, I mean, I've got four kids, I understand how hard it is. I'm not too involved in my community, but if you have the time, we do have programs. We have the ones I ran down with you, the citizens on patrol, the citizens advisory group, programs like those. So get involved. We allow, one thing, and actually I meant to bring them over, ride-along waivers, I would encourage each of you to come out and do a ride-along or two, if you have the time. And we do allow that for citizens, too. I mean, we do a background check, but I think it's good to see what we do. So I'm open to questions that anybody here has.
Mr. Bonzel. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have like a list of questions, and I sent most of them to the chief ahead of time, so you know, they're not surprises. But the first one I didn't send, though, I was just curious about the racial makeup of our police force and any efforts that have been taken now or in the past to try to recruit more minority officers.
So if memory serves, we have 47 officers. We have 40 white males, five white females, one male Hispanic, and one Asian male. That is our makeup currently. We have, we have, we have an open civil service test. Anybody can come take it. We have made efforts in the past. Lieutenant Hicks, maybe two tests to go, three tests to go, went to some predominantly black colleges, like I think Wilberforce was one, and attended some career fairs there and dropped off literature. It's just, just being honest with you, it's been hard to recruit good officers over the last couple of years. People just aren't wanting to get in this line of work, and I'm fairly certain with the events in Minneapolis, it's going to be even harder. But did that answer your question, or?
Yep, it does.
Okay.
And then the other questions that I had were along the, there's a group out there that created this police use of force project in 2016, and they basically had eight key policy recommendations to try to help just reduce the amount of injuries and deaths, excuse me, that happen in police custody. And so there's eight recommendations. I was just going to ask you questions about the eight of them. I sent you the questions ahead of time, and you did respond, and I appreciate that, so.
Okay.
The first one is, are officers required to de-escalate situations when possible before using force?
So we train, as part of our training, to de-escalate. I think I kind of, I think I went over that. We expect officers to use the least amount of force necessary to effect arrest. And once that person is in custody, handcuffs on, no, make it clear, just because the person's in handcuffs doesn't mean they're no longer a threat, but once they stop resisting, then our force stops. And if we see something different from that, we will address it. So, yeah, I don't, is that? Okay.
Yeah, that's perfect. The second recommendation was prohibiting officers from using chokeholds or strangling civilians. Does our policy currently prohibit that?
Our policy does not specifically prohibit a chokehold. We do not train on a chokehold. It is no part of our training. Our policy does go over positional asphyxiation and make the recommendations to not put pressure on the upper torso. Certainly, it's gone over in our defensive tactics training repeatedly, that you are not to put force on somebody's neck.
Thank you. The third one was to require officers to intervene and stop excessive force used by other officers, and to require officers to report incidents of excessive force by another officer immediately to their supervisor. Do we have a policy on that?
We do. Our policy reads that any officer present and observing another officer using force that is clearly beyond that which is objectively reasonable under the circumstances shall, when in a position to do, intercede to prevent the unreasonable use of force, and an officer who observes another employee use that force that exceeds the degree of force permitted by law should promptly report these observations to a supervisor.
Perfect, that's great. The fourth recommendation was to prohibit officers from shooting at moving vehicles. I think it's unless somebody from that moving vehicle is shooting at them or threatening them. Do we have any policy about shooting at moving vehicles?
We do. We have a policy that goes over both shooting at a moving vehicle and from a moving vehicle, and it states that if the danger of not shooting, that we can only shoot if the danger of not shooting is greater than the danger of shooting.
The fifth one was to institute a force continuum, essentially that limits the types of force and/or weapons that can be used to respond to specific types of resistance. Do we have something like a force continuum?
We do not have a force continuum, and I think I responded to you in your email a little bit about that. I know before I became chief, we got away from the force continuum. Most departments at that time were going away from the force continuum, and as far as I know, most departments have not swung back that direction. But we do train along those, again, part of our defensive tactics is working up and down the tools on an officer's belt, so it is part of our training.
Yep, that makes perfect sense. The sixth one was to require officers to exhaust all other reasonable means before resorting to deadly force. Is that part of our policy?
It is. Deadly force is a last resort.
Perfect. The seventh one was to require officers, when possible, to give a verbal warning before shooting at a civilian. Is that also part of our policies?
That is, that is a part of our policy, to give verbal warnings if possible, and that's with all uses of force. And that's something that we, again, train on, is giving loud, clear warnings, not just so the suspect can hear them, but so anybody around can hear what we are saying.
Perfect. And then the last one was about reporting. Are officers required to report each time they use force?
They are required to report for anything more than escort, which would mean if I grabbed you by the arm or balance displacement. Anything above that use of force, they are required to report.
Perfect. Yeah, and so I just want to follow up. So you know, many of the practices that have been recommended, and many of the practices that the city of Cincinnati has, I think they have seven of the eight of these practices, many of them Norwood has. I do think that there's some work that we could do to improve, specifically around just putting in a policy to restrict chokeholds. But overall, it sounds like, I mean, there's been a lot of thought to the use of force policies. You know, I know there's probably going to be some more discussion, but I would recommend that the public safety committee would, you know, take this up a little bit more and just to discuss this some more at some point. I don't want to stifle discussion, but I think there is some, just additional feedback that could be gained, but you know, I do want to thank the police chief for being here and for, you know, all of the work that you all do and the professionalism that your department does exhibit. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Drayce.
Kind of to respond to Mr. Bonzel a little bit. I know the chief didn't go into a whole lot of the explanations and some of the answers. However, I do know that the training that you're discussing as far as the chokehold and things to the throat and cervical area, is something that is trained in OPADA as a police officer in training. That is part of their curriculum when you go through the police academy. It is literally beaten in your head when you're at this academy, that you do not go anywhere near the neck or throat. Beaten in your head. So when you come out of that academy, that's the first thing you think of when you go to take somebody into custody, is to watch the neck, the back, and the throat. Okay? So I know that every police officer in this state trains the same way, because it's the same training. So this state has a training specifically for that. Okay? Second, force continuum is also trained in OPADA training. It's a specific class within OPADA that they go over force continuum. Again, that's another one that is beaten into an officer's head before they come out of that academy. I can't tell you how many days, how many classes that we didn't even go through, or force continuum wasn't even part of that class, and it was still inserted into that class. So you know, I appreciate the questions, and it gets to me because of where I, what I used to do, and being a former officer, that officers do catch a lot of flak for, I guess because they're not asked questions like that. And when they are asked questions like that and they give an answer, it's not accepted as an answer. It's not accepted. It's, well, you need to do better, you need to do more. So I wanted to go a little further into those answers a bit, and make sure that everybody knows, even the residents, that when these officers in the state of Ohio go through this training, these two things are beaten into their head, especially when they go through ASP training, because I used to be an ASP instructor, and I used to beat it into the head when training people on the ASP. You stay away from the neck, stay away from the throat, those are vital areas. So I just want everybody to know that, don't just let this go in one ear and out the other, that they're answers just because they're answers. They're not answers just because they're answers. They're real answers, and the officers are trained probably the best in Ohio, out of most of the trainings that I've looked into. If you go to fire academy, you go to police academy, we've got the most, we've got the most strict hours and training out of any state around. So I can tell you that anybody in Ohio is trained very well.
Thank you, Mr. Drayce. Mr. Gabbert, I saw your answer.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for the chief. A couple of them you already answered, talking about diversity and de-escalation-type trainings, which, you know, the only comment I would make on that is, there's always room, and you would agree, there's always a room for improvement, and especially in the area of diversity, in trying to make sure that we're reaching out to the different sectors and different races and cultures and stuff like that that we have within our community. I think our police do an outstanding job. We're very blessed in our city to have the police department and fire department that we have, and so I appreciate, you know, what you and your men do. Two questions that I have is, one would be, do our officers have an avenue to report any type of abuse? I mean, you admitted that, or you shared with Mr. Bonzel when his question about if they felt like there was over-force use or things like that, or just, you know, any type of situation like that. If an officer feels like, hey, I think he went maybe a little bit too far, do they have avenues that they can report that without possible ramifications that, you know, for themselves?
They are, they're required to report it to their first-line supervisor, and you know, I can't, I'm sure the chief of Minneapolis would have said he would have swore that would happen there would not have happened there. So I, but what I'm telling you is, I don't believe that we would have a problem or any ramifications if an officer reported that to his supervisor. We're, and it's something that we talk about on a somewhat regular basis, that if you stop somebody from using too much force, you're not, you're doing yourself a favor, but you're also doing them a favor, because you end up in jail or certainly out of a job. So I don't believe that they have to worry about ramifications, no.
Great. And then my follow-up question would be, do we have any type of avenue that they can seek for mental health? And I don't mean they've gone crazy, but that's an extremely stressful job, that they're out there every day, and you know, 95% of the people that they are going to have to go and respond to are not happy to see them. And so it's, because it is so stressful, do they have an avenue, or is it something that we need to look at as far as, and contracts to get into our insurance, that they can go and get help, not that takes them off of, out of duty or anything like that, but more or less somebody they can talk to and vent on, and you know, sometimes even get medication if need be?
So I believe in our insurance that we do have... So I believe in our insurance that we do have some coverage for mental health, seeing a psychologist, whatever the case might be. That is available to them. Additionally, they have the Public Assistance Employee, PEEP, I think it's Public Assistance Employee Program, that is available to them. That's at no charge. It's completely confidential. They can make an appointment. But with PEEP, you know, they are not licensed psychol, I believe they are counselors. So there's only so much that they can do, but through insurance, they have some of that available to them. But certainly, we can always look at that more. You know, I know Cincinnati, mainly for veterans, has a program for both officers and veterans on the street that might be dealing with some, you know, work stress with the added stress they brought home from the time that they served overseas. So, and that's available to any officer. Really, I've talked to their Cincinnati's, I can't think of his name off the top of my head, sergeant that handles it, and it's available. He said, "We'll go wherever." I mean, they've been sent out of state before to get people help. So that is something available to any of our veterans that might be dealing with, again, stressing the job with the added weight of what they've brought home with them, so.
Great. Thank you, chief.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Gabor. Anyone else? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I have a few questions. First, do we need to purchase more body cameras?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I'd like to purchase more body cameras for anybody who wants to do that. I'm not going to make a motion. Second, I want to echo what Mr. Bonzel says and kind of address what Mr. Dracy says about wanting to have a policy around force continuum and chokeholds. I totally understand and hear what you're saying about how much it is beaten to a trainee's head that you apply force in a certain manner, and you don't use chokehold because of that, and the importance that is obviously applied to those situations. I believe that we should have policy around it, not using it when they're actually employed by us. It's not that they aren't trained. It's not that they don't know how to do it, but if we don't have policy against it, I think that we're missing a chance to address it if it does occur. The third thing I wanted to speak about just briefly, everything that we've talked about here tonight has really been around excessive use of force. But there's another very large issue that we're all seeing in the country, and it's the systemic racism. And we haven't really talked about, there's a little bit of diversity training. I said you said that there's some diversity training, people have gone through some diversity training. I would like to see that actually made mandatory, and I don't know how we go about doing that or making a program where we actually do that, but I would like to see that made mandatory.
Just real quick, the mayor and I have talked about that, and he's made it clear that he would like to see us make that happen, so, just so you're clear.
I would also like, is, when you give citations or make arrests, do you make notes on the race of the people that you are making the citations or arresting?
We do. It goes in our cab.
Okay. Would it be possible to aggregate based on race and get a list of the last two or three years based on how it was applied by race?
I can definitely give you, I think I have 2000, I don't have 2019 right now. We've had trouble, Sergeant Thomas does it, he's had trouble with the extrapolating the data from the cab. I don't know all the technical aspects of it, but he is working on it, but I do have 2017 and 18, I believe.
Okay, I get that, that would be great. And the only reason I would like to see that, I don't know if there's a problem with law enforcement paying more attention to one group over another, but I believe we can use that data contained within those arrest records and those citation records to find out if there is. If there is, I would like for us to continue the discussion on ways that we may address that as an issue. As I said, it might not be an issue, but I just want to be able to check and find out.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Dracy.
All right. To respond to Mr. Thompson, I appreciate your comment about wanting a policy. Let me ask you something here, Mr. Thompson. Speed limit outside says 25. You do 26 miles an hour, breaking the law, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, it's a law not to go over 25 miles an hour, but people do it every day. So that's the same thing as having a policy. You know, you can have a policy and it still get broken. The training is what is there. The fact that they have the training and the knowledge as to when it is, when it is too much, it's there. They don't need a policy to know that something was wrong, you know?
But your argument is that we don't need laws because people will either break them or not based on their preconceptions?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that it's not going to stop a bad apple. You see where I'm going with that?
But the argument is that we don't need laws because laws don't stop bad apples, but what laws do do is they provide penalties for breaking the law.
Mr. Thompson, we have a littering ordinance, and there's litter out there every day. I mean, you can sit there and put paper, 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 paper. It's not going to stop that bad apple from littering, from speeding, from breaking into a house.
Mr. Dracy.
My hand was up first.
Go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, I defer. I'll defer.
So what you're saying is that you don't need rules because bad apples will break the rules anyway? That is your point? As a former police officer, you're saying you don't need laws because bad apples will break laws anyway?
Oh, Jesus. You're okay?
Well, I mean, that, it's okay, I ask him a question, he may answer.
Please.
I said, "I ask him a direct question, he may answer."
Mr. Dracy.
Okay. If you want to pull at strings all night long, we can pull at strings all night long. And I know I started it by the 25 mile an hour, 25 mile per hour string, but what I'm saying is, if they want to create a policy, that's on them, go for it. I'm saying that there should not be us sitting here and going, "We need that, we need that, we need that, we need that." I got, I took, I took a lot of flack for what I did, for going against cappies when I was asking for certain things. So now it's my turn, okay?
Give me flack, it's fine.
Gentlemen, can I say something? We've asked Chief Kramer to be here this evening, and I want to honor his time. Can we ask questions to the chief, please? Who had their hand up? Mr. Gabor?
Just a point of clarity. Making a policy makes it easier. If we had an issue, it makes it easier to dismiss that person or makes it easier to keep us from being in litigation. Chief, would you mind considering putting together a policy about not using any type of chokehold?
Yeah, I mean, just-
Just so we can have, I mean, you can discuss that with the mayor, the safety service director, however that needs to go, and then we can move on.
We've talked about that today. I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I don't think it should be a blanket, as a last resort.
Right.
Officer, I want them to go home. So if they're fighting with somebody who is stronger than them, a better skilled fighter than them, or both, I want them to do what they need to do. But yes, we can definitely put wording in there that a chokehold is something that is used as a last resort, and we'll look at doing that, and I'm not necessarily in disagreement. So.
Thank you, chief. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Kramer, thank you for being here tonight. I see you're injured and coming out here, and you're trying to be informative to us. I have a problem with, you just brought up the point that I want to make, is when you have an officer, say, especially in these times that we're in, we have people that are on serious drugs that transform them almost superhuman, and when you have an officer, say, that might be smaller than another assailant, let's call them assassins, that they're going out on a run, they interfere with somebody, so they have a conflict, and let's say that officer is being compromised, and they have to use this chokehold to disable this person, or they're not going home tonight. Can we just talk about what we're really talking about, keeping our officers safe and giving them the tools to do so? And so can you speak on tying the hands of officers for staying safe when they, for them to go home at night?
Well, I mean, that's why I said, I don't, I wouldn't want a blanket statement that you can never use a chokehold, right? I mean, anything, I don't want to get into too much hyperbole here, just sound crazy, but I mean, if an officer is losing a fight, and there's always one gun on the scene, and that's ours, sometimes there's more, but I don't want an officer to lose control, I don't want an officer to get hurt if they have to use a pen to get the person off of them. We can make it clear, but I do understand what Mr. Thompson and Mr. Bonzel are saying. We can look at things like that. But yes, my main goal is that officers are safe and they go home at the end of the night.
Yes, sir. And I agree with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Mr. Thompson?
I appreciate you saying that, chief. I agree with what you're saying. There's a last resort. We absolutely have to protect our officers.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Kels.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Kramer, I know you said before that there in the past has been efforts to try to recruit those from different races, backgrounds, and that. Do we currently have anything planned to continue that at this time or in the future?
We don't. Right now, we have a current civil service list, but, I mean, we had a plan that we've used in the past. It does require some man-hours, but, I mean, we can go back to that and, you know, we reach out to different newspapers and try to get the word out there, and certainly you guys can help with that, too, when it comes time to give another test, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kels. Anyone else? Mr. Dracy?
I want to know if any of the council members here heard about a year ago what happened near the Carousel Inn to a sheriff's deputy? But if not, let me enlighten you, because I'm sure the chief knows, and I'm sure the officers sitting over here know what happened. The officer was in a fight over near the Carousel Inn about a year ago, and he was up against a guy that had some PCP in his system, about twice his size, and got choked out. If the officer from Sycamore, the deputy from Sycamore, did not show up when he did and tased this guy and bull-rushed this guy, that deputy would have died, plain and simple. This deputy got choked out, okay? And I know because I showed up. Now, a little less than a year ago, we had almost the same thing happen in Columbia Township at a motel over there, okay? Deputy got into a fight, got choked out. Luckily, people were there, officers were there a lot quicker than they were on Reading Road, because he didn't have to go to the hospital at that point, unlike the first deputy, okay? That's two within a year, folks. How many of you heard about that? How many heard about both of those incidents outside of law enforcement? Probably nobody. So we have to look at where we protect our officers as well, okay? I do have a soft spot, because I was there, my family is there. I do hold that thin blue line just like anybody else, but I will also, I have also gone against people who have been in excess of their force, okay? However, we also have to look at our officers, too. We can't pin our officers as bad guys 24/7. We have to look at what doesn't get reported in the news, what people don't hear about.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Do we have any other questions for Chief Kramer? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I would just say that, yeah, I definitely want to clarify that, you know, I mean, any time that deadly force would be authorized, I mean, I'd say, you know, chokeholds at that point, that's an alternative to shooting the guy, or an alternative to, you know, a deputy or an officer being killed or themselves are seriously injured, you know, absolutely. And I'm sure that you, as a law enforcement professional and the safety service director and the mayor, I'm sure that that can be figured out on what, you know, a way to protect both the people that are in custody and the people that are, you know, serving our city. And the point of all of the questions that I asked today, I definitely could have asked them to Chief Kramer in private, and I did send them to him before the meeting, just so he could prepare and have full answers for them, but, I mean, it's also for our citizens to understand how our police interact with the citizens. And, you know, I think we have to kind of acknowledge here that I didn't live here, I didn't even know Norwood existed when I wasn't alive, when there were many issues in the past with the city and with race, and we have to realize that there's still a perception out there that Norwood's not really a welcome place to be, and I disagree that that should be the perception, because I feel like the Norwood that I know, since I've moved here in 2013, has been welcoming Norwood to my family, and it's been a Norwood where I feel like people are welcomed, but also I think we just have to realize that that's not the perception everywhere. So anyways, again, the point of the question was not to try to pin down an officer or to make our police department look bad. I mean, frankly, I think we're way more on a progressive scale when it comes to some of these than many police departments around the country, but it's really also just to educate our citizens so they know, you know, kind of where we're at. So anyways, I appreciate the discussion, Mr. Chair, and appreciate the chief for being here, and look forward to talking more about the chokehold policy if that's coming to effect. Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any further questions for the chief?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Chief Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to item I, reports of standing committees of council. Item I-1 is Parks, Recreation, and Public Spaces Committee report. Mr. Kels.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Parks, Recreation, and Public Spaces Committee met on May 20th of 2020. The Parks, Recreation, and Public Spaces Committee heard from Donna Lake, representing ASAP Norwood regarding their continuous efforts on the basketball court project down at Waterworks. ASAP Norwood canvassed the community via an online survey for input on the design choices that they had. We also discussed the need and cost of future maintenance for the course that they're redoing. Ms. Lake also wanted residents interested in donating to the basketball court project to know that they can go to asapnor.org, to the Get Involved tab, and it'll come down and there's a spot that says Donate. The Parks, Recreation, and Public Spaces Committee also heard from Donna Lake regarding the park audit tool that will be used as a tool to aid the city in Parks renovation plan. This is currently in the process of being formatted and to be a complete audit tool. The audit tool will be used by volunteers to visit each park to rate what's in our parks, such as access, signage, quality of play equipment, benches, stuff of that nature. The results will then be compiled, ranking each park, so that we can have a list, a priority list, of ones that we think need worked on. The Parks, Recreation, and Public Spaces Committee then heard from a resident, John Moore, regarding the creation of a pocket park on the corner of Hudson and Floral. Mr. Moore's proposal requires zero city financing. The owner of the parcel in question gave the okay for the project, and Mr. Moore wants people to know that he wishes to use this as a nice place to gather that promotes walkability in the area and is as self-sustaining as possible, and we all thought that was a pretty good idea as well. The Parks, Recreation, and Public Spaces Committee discussed some bids for the Waterworks bleachers, upper Millcrest stairs, with the purpose of writing our opinion to the safety service director. The committee liked the bid for the Waterworks bleachers, though we felt we needed a third, which we've since received. The committee likes the bid to remove the dangerous Millcrest stairs and open up the trail leading from upper to lower Millcrest. It'll create a nice park environment and save a little bit of money for city projects as well. The last thing on the agenda was Lisa Tanner Memorial Park, which is the top lot up at Waterworks. I presented a plan to renovate, dedicate the park to the late Lisa Tanner. All committee members agreed it was a good idea. I noted it's a highly visible and underserved park in the heart of Norwood. The total renovation plan comes in under the allocated funds for that key item on the Parks Capital Improvements Plan. We discussed opening up a period of time to accept donations, allowing residents the opportunity to have a hand in the park's creation, and purchasing a plaque for those that did donate. We ran that fundraiser, and we were able to raise $3,600, $1,000 of which came from the Norwood Fire Department, which we're very, very appreciative of. And lastly, some notable park updates. Mulch has been delivered to Burrwood Park for the new playground equipment. Moore has been ordered and has since been delivered to lower Millcrest for that park's new equipment. In regards to Burrwood, Kate Wetzel put together a park survey for Burrwood Park, receiving 122 responses, 83 of which advocated for filling in the pool in the park, and I noted to the other committee members that I would like this kind of format that she did to serve as the format we use in the future when looking at other parks. Thought it was a very good idea. And Mr. D'Nardo also anticipates an update on the drainage issues at Burrwood Park very soon, and that's it.
May I have a motion to receive the following report? Motion- May I have a motion to receive and file the report? Motion by Mr. Donardo, second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion?
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to I-2, economic development. Mr. Gabbard.
Date 6/9/20 to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio. We, your economic development, to whom was referred murals, beg leave to submit the following report. Much discussion was had by several members of our community and heard the opinion from Tim Gary from our law department. The committee would like to ask that an ordinance be drafted to approve murals, and then this committee can then over, then can reconvene to discuss further. Respectfully submitted, Michael Gabbard, chairperson, Eric Donardo, Eric Thompson, and James Bonzel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we receive and file the report.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Please call.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye. Moving on, as I discussed in the amendment of the agenda, I'm going to move Q3, as I said, right here, so we can bring Mrs. Mary C. Miller from Norwood Together. She's going to discuss the grant. Thank you.
Some of you have seen this. I'm just handing out a brief description of the grant that we wrote with the city. Some people here have seen it already, but I might be a little bit lost.
Thank you, Mary C.
I think most of you guys know me, but my name is Mary C. Miller. I live at 1845 Hopkins Avenue, and I am the board president of Norwood Together. I just wanted to give you a brief history of what occurred. Norwood Together, if any of you were involved in the quality of life planning process, you know that one of the main goals or visions in that process was the redevelopment of Montgomery Road. So, last year, Norwood Together met with, did some strategic planning, and in the economic development area, we decided that our main goal for this year was to write a plan for the redevelopment of Montgomery Road. So, we met with the mayor and just asked how, if he would support us moving forward in that area. And then we also met with Hamilton County and came to the conclusion that Norwood Together and the City of Norwood would partner to write a mini planning grant, CDBG planning grant, with Hamilton County. What happened was, we originally were going to write the grant, submit it, and go out for procurement, but then all of a sudden COVID-19 happened. So, the county changed their process, and we skipped the pre-application process, went straight to the grant, and if approved, we would be working with Hamilton County to create this redevelopment plan for Montgomery Road. And as you know, that's what happened. And we were supposed to hear on May 21st, so being the antsy person that I am, I emailed the county right away and said, "We haven't heard anything. Does that mean we didn't get it? What's going on?" And they said, "No, because of the recent activities in our city and just the chaos that was going on." They were a little bit behind. But yesterday, we got this wonderful letter that said Norwood had been accepted, and so we received a $30,000 grant. We will not receive the money. The money will go to Hamilton County, but Hamilton County then will help us to implement the plan. As you may know, Norwood Together's mission is to build equitable economic, to grow and build equitable economic and community development in Norwood. And our vision is that Norwood become a diverse destination city where households thrive, businesses prosper, and everyone is welcome. So, it seems like the mission and vision for our group are very apropos for what's going on in our society today. But I wanted to let you know that what we want to do is pull together all the stakeholders. So, right now, we're putting together a steering committee and a list of all the stakeholders on Montgomery Road, from the lateral to Dana Avenue. And so, the plan will be to address that area of Montgomery Road. And there's five main goals of the plan, the first being an inventory of existing conditions. And I'm not going to read all of this to you, but I just kind of want you to get the idea of what we're hoping to get, how many buildings are vacant, what are their conditions, how much parking do we have, what's the zoning like in those spots. The second thing, which I think is a really good target for us, is to assess market conditions, what are rental rates and commercial spaces in other areas of the city, and to compare those to Norwood, to see what current market offerings are, what are recent sales of multifamily residents and large parcels, and a review of all the market data. So, we can kind of just see, market-wise, what are our chances, what are our opportunities to promote Norwood, especially along Montgomery Road. Thirdly, a physical analysis of any problems and opportunities along the corridor. What are visually, do we have any things that we really, they're markers, we want to see those stay? What are our strengths there? What are our weaknesses? What is our character? What do we want that character to look like? What's the circulation system like? What are key areas for redevelopment? And what do we really want as a community? Not only just the residents, the business owners, the property owners, city government, what do we want it to look like? And then from that, create a future development plan for the road. Land use plans, streetscape recommendations, circulation recommendations, and the performance appeal and appeal of the corridor. So, gosh, what would we want it to be if it could be that? And lastly, probably the most important piece of this is, what does implementation look like? Let's produce an implementation strategy, highlighting the tools that we need to implement what we want to happen. What are some funding scenarios? What are some partners we can work with? Who are some partners we can work with? We are working, we're partnering with CBI, with the city, and with HCDC, as well as the county, to put this together and hope to be finished or need to be finished by June of 2021. So, we're excited. We hope you're excited. It's a pretty neat opportunity. There, Norwood Together is donating estimated in-kind contribution of $10,000 to this process. We also hope that it will open up doors for future financial possibilities for Norwood Together to get for the city and just lead to... The other thing about this grant is that it opens up the opportunity for future CDBG projects, such as like facade improvements, property acquisition, and redevelopment. So, it's like an open door for us to move forward to the next step, to work on the... It seems like the corridor is what a lot of people see when they visit Norwood, is the impression they get of Norwood, and we're all very proud to live here. So, we want the main corridor of our road to look like we all feel. I don't know if you realize this, but the bus stop at Surrey Square is the second busiest bus stop in Hamilton County. So, a lot of people in this county come to Norwood and stop right in the middle. So, let's make it a place that we're proud to show off, and that's where we hope this leads. So, I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you to Mayor Schneider for giving us the go-ahead to go forward with this. Thank you for Michael Gabbard and his input, and thank you for Tom Perry and his help, and everybody else that's had some input here. Yes, sir? Question?
Oh, I'm sorry. You have to record. Have you finished? Were you finished? Okay. Mr. Dracy.
All right. I have a few questions, if nobody minds. I mean, the last speaker got a few questions from council members, so I have a few questions. I guess the end of your statement kind of verified who from the city was involved, because I didn't, I really haven't myself seen an update on this, so I don't know how many other council members other than Mr. Gabbard saw an update on this. But I'm assuming that it was a lot of the administration from your ending comments, so I'll take that as the answer. Are you going to go through council with any plans that you bring to the table? You know, I don't want to go and see another ASAP situation where we've got public land or public buildings or public area being utilized without input from council or committees prior to anything being decided.
Well, let me just make this clear. I probably should have done this. The city is the applicant. What we are doing is managing the process. The plan will belong to the city. So, we will not have any legal, we will not have any legal jurisdiction to make any decisions that the city would be making. And we have a memorandum of understanding with the city. I did not bring that, but Keith could probably quickly explain it to you if he wanted to, that we are basically working with the city as the authors of the grant. We wrote the grant. Everything was sent to those people that I mentioned in the city to preview, and then, as I said, the plan will belong to the city.
Okay. My next question would be, why the south end? Seems like the south end seems to be getting a lot of attention this year. Why are we not focusing on our north end, which is also a corridor to the city? We have everything up in Ward 4, Carthage Avenue. It's a big coming and going from Roseland and Bond Hill. We've got Ross Avenue. We've got Montgomery Road that leads into Pleasant Ridge. But it seems like, over the last two years and including this year, that we want to focus on the south end. Why?
Well, for one reason, most of this, or a big portion of this, is the opportunity zone, and we want to have some influence on how that zone is used. We had to limit the amount of space that we targeted for the grant instead of all of Montgomery Road, so we wanted to target the area that was the most visible and we felt like was the most need, had the most need.
Okay. You also mentioned that the bus stop near Crowers was the second-most-used bus stop in Hamilton County. Where'd you get those numbers from?
Say that again.
Where'd you get those numbers from?
I think it's called City Streets. I did not bring that portion of the grant with me. I'm sorry. It is documented in the grant, that information of where it came from.
Okay.
And if you'd like a copy, I'd be glad to send it to you.
I'm just trying to figure out why we're so focused on that south end, because the north end, whether it's parks, whether it's streets, whether it's community development, whatever it may be, Carthage Avenue needs some work, the north end of Montgomery needs some work, and that north end, three and four seem to be the stepchild. And I think three and four need to be worked on. So, and again, I guess you answered my question of who from the city is going to be involved with the decision-makings and the plans of this, so I'll let that go.
As you can see, a lot of it is research. So, you know, it's mostly, that's a big part of it.
Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Miller.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work that you put involved in this grant and the work that you've done with Norwood Together, and the work, the quality of life is done, and the great people that are involved in this. And it's such a wonderful use of your time and to bring Norwood, to bring money to Norwood for, to invest in our future. I am very thankful for you and anyone else involved in this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? I'm good. Mr. Donardo?
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, guys. And our email address is norwoodtogether@gmail.com. If you have any more questions, just shoot me an email. I'll be glad to answer the best of my ability, and we'll keep you posted.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to do right now is, there was a letter from Mayor Schneider regarding this. It was Q3, and what I'd like is a motion to receive and file the letter and also the handout that we had from Mrs. Miller.
Sure. Letter dated June 9th of 2020 to Mr. Ken Miracle, President of Council and members of Norwood City Council. In addition to council meeting agenda, dear President and members of council, I write to ask that the council add a reading of the letter from Norwood Together regarding the mini planning grant awarded to the City of Norwood for $30,000 from Hamilton County to study the redevelopment of Montgomery Road at the June 9th, 2020 council meeting. Also, I would like for Mary C. Miller to be allowed to speak on the topic of the grant, explaining how the process will be implemented. Sincerely, Victor Schneider, City of Norwood.
May I have a motion to receive and file the letter in the app? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would make a motion that we receive and file the letter and just express our appreciation for Norwood Together and the city administration for their work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. May I have a second? Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Item J, third readings, ordinances, and resolutions. We don't have any receiving. Item K, second reading, ordinances, and resolutions. We don't have any receiving. Brings us to item L, introductory readings of ordinance and resolutions. L-1, ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. May I have a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to have all three readings. And in doing so, when it comes to time of discussion, I'll do my best to explain these particular appropriation changes that are proposed, but one of them is linked to another ordinance, and so I want to make sure that we talk about it in a way that allows for the second ordinance to come through. Think you understand?
I understand. May I have a second?
I'd like to thank him.
Second by Mr. Bonzel. Discussion, Mr. Donardo.
Yes, please. Thanks. So, the highlighted item under the appropriation changes is obviously the movement of $90,000 from recreation contractual to fire department capital projects. The reference line item that you all were emailing says fire truck. I'll do my best to give the value proposition from purely a financial perspective, allowing us to hopefully vote and approve the appropriation changes, such that Chief McCabe can come up and explain kind of what he actually sees as the need. So, this $90,000 is to repair a, repair or replace the 24-year-old ladder truck that had catastrophic engine failure. The cost of repairing a 24-year-old ladder truck with catastrophic engine failure is $50,000. There's likely around a $3,500 transportation cost with an out-of-service period of something like three months, and we would still need to retire the truck at the end of the year. It's 24 years old, and we like to stick to a 25-year-old rotation. That's why the plan that we approved kind of led us down that road in 2021. Option two, I suppose, to go against that would be a purchase of a potential 10-year-old ladder truck from the Cincinnati Fire Department, $80,000, with a much more limited out-of-service period and an estimated trade-in value in two to three years of $30,000, $27,000 in today's dollars, if you were to bring that back to present value. That leaves a net cost valuation of $53,000, plus the obvious upside that in the then-year time period that we would be potentially evaluating a trade-in, you have a 13-year-old truck that will likely last longer than a 25-year-old truck would. So, $53,000 versus $53.5,000 with an obvious upside. That would be the value proposition that we're talking about here. So, basically, a wash, and one will last likely longer, giving us the ability to evaluate if the trade-in makes sense in three years, or if we just keep it, keep this rolling, thus freeing up capital in our budget. I don't really want to go any further into the details of the truck, because I want to let someone with a lot more experience in the matter speak. I just wanted us to understand why that $90,000 was chosen and give a little color that the $90,000 moved from the recreation contractual line item is not taking funds from the recreation the $90,000 moved from the recreation contractual line item is not taking funds from the recreation line item. What it is doing is moving what is earmarked as $120,000 of contractual services and moving it to the fire department, but we are unlikely to use that $120,000. The reason being is because those contractual services were likely going to be used in support of the pool, but because of the delay in opening and the type of use that we're going to, the type of services we're going to be offering, we're not going to need all that money. So pulling $90,000 is, in my mind, an easy appropriation change, because that $120,000 is going to be unused if we weren't to do anything with it. Having talked anything more, just related to the financials, not anything to do with the fire truck that Chief McCabe is going to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Any further discussion? Mr. Bunsel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just wanted to express, it makes sense, the changes, especially, you know, moving the $90,000 to the capital projects of the fire department, just so that money is available in case we do approve the next ordinance, which talks about procuring the fire truck. So I think it makes sense, and I'll be voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Geraci?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings?
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. May I have a motion? Mr. Donardo?
I'd like to pass this.
Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Mr. Geraci?
Second.
Second, my best. Mr. Geraci? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Geraci?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. The ordinance passes. Moving on to L2. Prior to voting on L2, I would like to ask Chief McCabe to come forward. Thank you, Chief McCabe.
Good evening. Didn't think I'd see you guys until after the summer. I thought my time here was done, so. So you all are aware, on May 22nd, the ladder truck, which was a 1996 Seagrave ladder truck, went out of service with a catastrophic engine failure. Obviously, being Memorial Day weekend, it even took four days to have it evaluated. Quick evaluation, basically, the engine was locked up, cracked head, had released coolant into the engine block, and we started quotes. We started looking into getting repair quotes to see what it would look like. When the initial one came in, I immediately went to Safety Service Director's office to advise him of the sheer cost and that, in my opinion, that would be a poor use of taxpayer dollars. Mr. Donardo commented about 25 years. 25 years is the mandatory retirement age for fire trucks. We'd like to replace our engines at every 15 years and ladders at 20. These are large capital expenses. And unfortunately, what you are seeing is the non-adherence to a regular fleet replacement schedule. The fire department has provided schedules of many things for purchasing that unfortunately, in the past decade, fell on deaf ears. We're working on it. And in some of the conversations I've had with council, I expressed my, I've been quite adamant about, we need to have capital expenditures plans put in place that are strategic that can flex either forward or backwards, so we're not in emergency spending. We should have a 4-year-old ladder truck in the firehouses right now. It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate. It seems like we're in an emergency replacement all the time. So how this came about, basically, in a rush, looking for something, we've had previous conversations with Cincinnati Fire. I spoke with their Assistant Chief of Operations and said, we might be able to loan you something in the meantime, because we were looking at somewhere from eight to 12 weeks for engine replacement if we went down that road. And while we were down there, they had a spare that was going to be, that was actually on the auction block as we were looking at it. And the reason, they typically don't get rid of trucks that are 11 years old, but the reason why this one was up for sale is because it only fits into a third of their firehouses. When they had purchased these, they were going to specific firehouses, but when they go into spare rotation, they need to fit in all the houses that have ladder companies, and that was not a possibility. So it went up for auction. And in discussions, the apparatus officer, Captain Brett Hertewell, and I went down and looked at it. It'll serve our needs. Now, I will caution you, this is a stopgap. This is not what we need. We're talking about a truck, the ladder truck that we have carries about 200, just about 200 feet of ground ladders. The one we're getting carries about 150. You saw that firehouse fires, houses on fire, on Silver, and looked at the total ground ladder complement that was out? It was a bunch. And we didn't have any rescues going on. And in Norwood, it is critical for us to have a large ground ladder complement because of wires and the closely packed housing stock in this city. It's not unusual for us to throw a 45 and a 35 for a fire, for rescues, and not even be able to use that giant ladder on top. The ladder truck that we expect for the replacement within the FRP calls for 235 feet of ground ladders. You know, it's important. Now, what this truck does, in my opinion, is it protects the taxpayer dollars in terms of, we will expend some, but we will also recoup some when we do a trade. When we looked at this truck, I made sure our dealer took a look at it in terms of, give me an approximate valuation in today's dollars, and then what would a trade-in value? Trade-in value would be somewhere between 30 and 40. At the two-year mark, we look at ordering a Seagrave with an FRP, we should be ordering that truck January for delivery in '22, and that's where it's placed in the financial recovery plan that was accepted. You know, knowing that we'll have an 11-year-old fire truck, maintenance should not be as critical on that in terms of additional expenditures. We will still have lots of maintenance to do on it. However, I've told you guys before, the fire trucks that are of 20 years of age, we're spending money faster than we can get it in appropriations. It's been a tough year in terms of those things. But I think it's a sound proposition. Obviously, we need to get the ladder tested. It was scheduled to get tested today, but that didn't work out. We will have it tested prior to any funds exchanged with Cincinnati. It's taken a lot of work. I want to commend the mayor for reaching out. For those of you who don't know, the Cincinnati Fire Department doesn't own their vehicles. Cincinnati Police don't own their vehicles. Fleet Services and the city of Cincinnati are the ones responsible for their vehicles. So it's not like I can have a conversation with Chief Winston from Cincinnati and say, hey, can we get this done? It's got to go through five different departments. We were heading a little roadblock, but Mayor Schneider reached out and basically got that deal done in about an afternoon, sir. It was really helpful. And we've done a lot of legwork trying to get this thing done. I do not like bringing emergency ordinances to council. I think, and that's why I reached out to each one of you, to make sure that you had an opportunity to ask questions, to have the information provided to you prior to. And I'm happy to take any questions, maybe ask any.
Mr. Strickson?
Well, you answered my question about the ladder test. I was going to ask you if it had gotten tested, but that answered that question. So what you're looking for is this truck to be a two-year temporary stopgap, as it may be, even though it might have under Norwood, I guess, Norwood Fire Department leeway 20 years, which would give us about nine, maybe 10 years of leeway with this truck. And we're getting a truck that essentially really doesn't have too many mechanical problems. Rosenbauer is known for building good trucks. I would ask that if you're looking to still come for a brand-new truck next year, that we have an independent look at pricing and a competitive process, and we're not just looking at Seagrave, because I know you went to Seagrave and asked them what the trade-in value on this was going to be. I don't think that Norwood needs to look at the Cadillac every single time. I understand where you guys come from and tradition, and it's always been Seagrave in the city of Norwood. However, looking at budgetary, the budgetary outlook, I think we need to kind of open our minds and take a big look at the big picture to see if there's something that might be out there that is just as good quality, that might be a little less expensive.
I'd be happy to do that, as long as you promise me you're going to replace my fire trucks every 15 years.
As what?
If you're going to replace my fire trucks every 15 years, we'd be happy to do that. But knowing that's not the case, and hasn't been in the past, that's why we buy Seagrave.
Well, I can't promise that, because I can't promise that I'm going to be here for 15 years.
Correct. Exactly. As the fire chief, looking out for the fire department, for longevity of vehicles and past practice, what we've had in those doors, we have a 1990 Seagrave, still runs, can't use it, it's past NFPA. It's still in great shape, no metal fatigue on that truck. But when you have extruded aluminum cabs running up and down these roads, you know what happens? The welds peel off.
Chief, I well understand what a fire truck goes through. You know my past as being a former firefighter. I've been there, I've driven them, I've run the pump on them. I know everything about, that I could know about a fire truck, okay? However, I also have to look, along with the rest of the council, at our budget as well. We have to look at what we can afford, at what time. Now, if we can afford in a year the Cadillac of fire trucks, I'd absolutely be happy to look into that. However, I would also like an independent research, not a fire department research, but maybe somebody from the city, maybe our Safety Service Director, go out and get bids or do a state bid to try and find out if we can find something that is comparable that might be less. Because I also have to look out for the citizens' money as well.
Sure. And I can tell you that in actively planning the FRP, their money is there right now. It was approved, it's ready to go.
It may have been approved.
As the fire chief of the fire department, I will actively push for what I think best serves the citizens in terms of tax dollar value, what will serve the firemen in terms of safety.
And I understand that.
That is my job, and I will do that ardently.
I understand that, and I will push to make sure that our residents aren't paying out the nose when we don't have to. I mean, if Seagrave comes back with the best offer, absolutely. If they come back with a phenomenal offer, I have no problem doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Mr. Bunsel?
Yeah, I'm happy to go ahead and go. So, one is want to thank Chief McCabe for being here. I actually think this is pretty phenomenal, that we're able to get, you know, an 11-year-old ladder for $80,000. That's going to, even if it only met our needs for a year, I just think it's phenomenal. Plus, there would be some trade-in value there, too. I mean, we have to have this. I mean, the fact that we didn't have a ladder, well, quick question, did we have a ladder truck for that fire on Silver?
We did not.
Or did it depend on mutual aid?
No. And as luck would have it, Cincinnati Fire was shopping at the Norwood Krogers when we got the dispatch for houses on fire. They had also received a report with possible structural fire on Rhode Island, which turned out to be our fire. So they almost arrived simultaneously, which never happens. In terms of mutual aid for ladder companies, we know that our average response time for a ladder truck into our city from St. Mirren is almost 11 minutes. You won't be on the third floor with a ladder, no ladders. I mean, the largest ladder we carry in the engine company is 24 feet. You know, we know a delay from Cincinnati is approximately five minutes from request to showing up. It's tough. It's tough, you know? And I realize that the budgetary things that sometimes require more reliance on neighborhoods or other cities, but as a, providing a fire department for 19,000 full-time residents of the city, it's important that we have one, especially with our old housing stock.
Sure. Yeah. And so, yeah, I appreciate you all finding that. I guess we can figure out the ladder truck next year, or as we do the financial recovery plan. I'm sure you'll be planning with the city administration, and I trust the city administration and the fire department will bring forward something that they both believe that is going to best suit the city. You know, I mean, to me, I'm not an expert in fire equipment, and so, you know, I have to depend on the expertise of the fire department, who is here all the time in order for that. So I definitely appreciate that, and appreciate your outreach this week to make sure that we are informed. But anyways, with all that being said, I am going to vote, when we get this motion, I'm going to vote for the three readings, and to get this done, I think it's important for our citizens to make sure that we have a ladder truck, so. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Mr. Donardo, I saw your handle first.
Well, I'll be brief. It's just to reiterate what was said when I said, what I said when I was requesting the appropriation changes, which is what we're asking here is to fill an immediate need for a ladder truck. Whether that ends up being a stopgap for two years, or we go to an evaluation, something different, I kind of don't care right now about this particular thing, because all we're trying to do is look at mathematically, how do we fill that? And I think we do that in either option, getting a repair to a 24-year-old truck, or for $500 less, getting a, the value is $500 less when you consider the trade-in and the time value of money for exactly the same thing with upside. And it allows for the option to do the evaluation in two years, whether I'm here or not. So it's just to be very clear that what we're voting on is the ability to get a ladder truck or repair the ladder truck, and there's a $500 difference between those options, so.
Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm pretty excited about this. It's, I want to thank Mr. Schneider for the work that you mentioned that he put in on this, and I want to thank you, Mr. McCabe, for, you know, I feel like that since we have addressed our chief situation, I feel much more confident in our departments. And I think this is one more step in making us whole. And so, you know, those of you who don't know, it was affected five to seven years ago, it's kind of a blur, but, you know, I had my incident with the fire department, and so, and I look at this ladder truck as a potentially lifesaving resolution today. So I'm excited for you, and I'm excited for Norwood, and I can't wait to vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Any further questions or comments for Chief McCabe? Mr. Kelch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank the chief for coming out today and explaining this to us, his work and the mayor's work to make this deal happen. I think it's pretty extraordinary that we were able to get something like this for this cheap. It's really turning, you know, lemons into lemonade, as it were, because these things do get pricey. Just the fire we had the other, just a couple days ago, not having a ladder truck there, that's something I thought about all day while I was out at my son's baseball game, while that was going on. And then thereafter that, it was just kind of nerve-wracking. And this is a safety issue, and we could debate saving money here, saving money there, but this is something, we need to just vote on this, get this truck. We can talk about how long it's going to last in Norwood after this, and just make sure that these guys are safe, and then the citizens of Norwood are safe. And again, thank you for the work you guys put in on this. Let's do the right thing here.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Anyone else? Mr. Bunsel?
Yeah, when you're ready, I'm ready to make the motion. Do all three readings.
Okay. I just wanted to thank Chief McCabe for his time.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden.
So moving on to L2, is the ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Safety Service or the mayor to enter into a contract with the city of Cincinnati to purchase a 2009 Rosenbauer ladder truck and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bunsel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry to rush that. But I would move that we have all three readings of this ordinance.
Mr. Brayden?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bunsel, second by Mr. Brayden. We have all three readings. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Geraci?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings?
Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Safety Service or the mayor to enter into a contract with the city of Cincinnati to purchase a 2009 Rosenbauer ladder fire truck and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Safety Service or the mayor to enter into
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Denardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members of the present, voting aye. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings?
Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Safety Service or the Mayor to enter into a contract with the city of Cincinnati to purchase a 2009 Rosenbauer ladder fire truck and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Safety Service or the Mayor to enter into a contract with the city of Cincinnati to purchase a 2009 Rosenbauer ladder fire truck and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Safety Service or the Mayor to enter into a contract with the city of Cincinnati to purchase a 2009 Rosenbauer ladder fire truck and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Tracy?
I'll make a motion, pass it.
May I have a second? Mr. Gabbert? Any further discussion? Please call the wall.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Tracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Denardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members of the present, voting aye. Go ahead and pass it. Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor? I just, I thought it was interesting and important to note that this fire truck is called a Spartan Gladiator, and I think we should, I think we should refer to our ladder truck now, from now on, as a Gladiator. With that being said, I think we need new helmets for the firefighters that respond, and we've got a couple choices, a couple choices here, so, for the Gladiator drivers, we need to figure out which helmet we want to reissue to the fire department for the Gladiator, so.
Definitely the black.
I don't even, I don't want to ask Mr. Tracy, I'd rather not, but if you want to recognize him, go ahead.
I'd prefer the chief wear that on his daily basis, please, and I would pick the black one.
But we'll leave those up here for a while, but the Gladiator will, I'm sure the chief's going to get it in the service as quick as possible, but it's a big vehicle. I mean, we're replacing a big vehicle, but the Gladiator is a big vehicle, so. All right, thank you, for just a minute of time. Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Before we move on to ordinance L3 and L5, Mr. Wood, do you want to introduce?
We have a gentleman here from Dynegy, and I'm sorry, I'm not sure which gentleman from Dynegy, is it Nick?
Nick.
Yeah, I was hoping if he could come down and kind of explain to council what's going on, and look yourself, I'm too sorry.
All right, good. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Evening, President, Mayor, Council. My name is Rich Surace, I'm actually with Energy Alliances. We are the independent consultant that was selected by the city of Norwood some years back to help both negotiate rates for the facilities and lighting, as well as the aggregation program. And I think the first item is the facilities, is that correct? I'll make sure I explain them in order so that it's fresh to everybody.
Retail power to the city of Norwood.
Correct. Yeah, that's right. So, the first ordinance on tonight is for the facilities and lighting agreement, so that actually expired in May, though we started talking with members of the city, I believe, with Mr., with, I'm sorry, Tim, I forget his last name.
Mr. Gary, yeah.
Back a couple months, a month ago, but obviously, things got a little bit crazy very quickly, and being able to finish and negotiate those rates and kind of get things done became a challenge of timing. So, the current contract that the city's paying for all the facilities, so that would be, you know, the buildings, the fire departments, and then all the lighting districts, are currently at 3.76 cents, and again, that ended in May. We were able to get Dynegy, who is the current supplier, to extend that for the two months, so they did carry that through June, I'm sorry, through May, and they did carry that through June. So, they came back to us with a price of 4.12 cents to renew, and that would start this July and go for 24 months. So, again, that would be for all the facilities that the city pays for, as well as the lighting district. Now, we may say that that price seems higher, from the 3.76 to the 4.12, but it actually is not a full apples-to-apples comparison. So, all the accounts, all the city accounts and all the lighting accounts were not on the original agreement. So, we had some of them paying the 3.76, actually, a few of them got rolled into the previous, aggregation price, which was 5.39, and some of them were sitting stolen Duke standard service, which was something north of 5 as well. So, yes, the individual contract price may seem higher, but it's not as if we had all of them at the 3.76, and then moving them all to 4.12. They were at 3.76, 5.39, 5, something from Duke, and then it's all been aggregated together. But overall, now, yes, the individual rate may be higher, but the city will see a pretty significant savings overall, now that all the load is aggregated together. So, to kind of put that in perspective, the original contract had about 1.6 million kilowatt-hours, and right now, we have 2.4. So, we've added about 50% more volume to that, again, at a lower rate for the city to pay at an aggregate level. And again, to kind of also put that in perspective, the 4.12 that was offered by Dynegy, again, to carry that over and then to extend, that's about 6.2% lower than Duke's standard service rate. So, if you decided to say, you know, we were not going to do anything today, you know, Dynegy would eventually have to send those back to Duke, because the contract has expired, and the rate that you would pay, again, on an aggregate level across the year is about 4.39, so about 6.2% higher, if those would end up going back to Duke.
Any questions? Mr. Tracy?
I guess I'm on a roll tonight, so I'll keep it going here. Through the chair to Law Department. Did, did we go over any other proposals?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. The city has hired, the name of-
Energy Alliance.
Energy Alliance, that's correct. So, three years ago, four years, we set up a deal where the city would offer an electricity aggregation service for the customers. That, the agency that was hired is Energy Alliance to represent the city in negotiations during that process, also as a part of that process, for the deals that they can, that they can get through, you know, whatever they can get going out to the market to see what they can get, would also be able to provide, to come up with a supplier for the city. That's where this comes from, is based on Energy Alliance going out to the market to get what's, whatever the best deal is in terms of the city. For this particular ordinance, for the next one would be about, for the aggregation being offered to the residents. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions regarding Kelch? Would you like to speak to the other ordinance?
Sure. So, the other ordinance today is for the city aggregation, the electric aggregation. So, that is the price that eligible residents and small businesses of the city can take advantage of. The current price is 5.39 cents, and that program actually comes to an end this August. Back in 2017, when we, so that 3, 5.39 was a three-year program, it went from August of 2017 till August of 2020. At the time when we negotiated that rate, and Dynegy happened to be the supplier of the aggregation as well, we were able to tag on an additional 10 months of price. So, that would have went from August of 2020 to June of 2021, so still 10 months from now. And that price was at 5.09. So, we knew at the absolute worst case for the city, we would be able to lower residents' rates from 5.39 to 5.09 for that 10-month period that would start this August. I'll try to keep it somewhat simple, there's sort of a lot of logistics that go into running the program, and a lot of, you know, so I work with, I used to work for one supplier, I actually used to work for Duke Retail and Dynegy all the way through. You know, there's a lot of logistics, and a lot of it beyond just price, is how it impacts the residents. So, there are things, you know, they'll get letters from suppliers, they'll get letters from Duke during this entire process. So, if we would have just stayed with that 10-month program, so the program from August of this year through June of next year, for 10 months, it's still a great price of 5.09, again, kind of putting things in perspective as far as bidding, the city of Cincinnati, they just signed 4.95. And so, it's, that's pennies to the average resident. You know, instead of just doing that 10-month, where they would get letters from Dynegy this month, and then really, seven months from now, we'd have to do it again, they would get letters again from the next supplier, I went to Dynegy and said, what can you do for an extension on that? We already knew we were locked in for the 5.09 for the 10 months, what can we do beyond that? So that we can just send one letter to residents and say, here's a price for a length of time. And they were able to hold that price at 5.09 for an additional 10 months, I'm sorry, just 12 months beyond that. So, wrapping that all up, what we're asking is that we'd like to renew the aggregation price from August of this year through June of 2022 at 5.09. So, we're taking the aggregation price from 5.39, ending this August, to then 5.09 for 24 months. So, that reduces the price from the current program by about 5.6%, and it's actually about 4.8% lower than Duke's rates. For those that may not be fully familiar, I'll kind of go through a quick timeline. So, what would happen is that we would, not we, we'll work with Dynegy, Dynegy will actually send the letters, they'll have the city's letterhead, logo, everything on it. Letters will go out in June, and residents and small businesses would have the opportunity to opt, this is an opt-out program, so they have the ability to opt out. So, they will get a letter and say, you know, if you like this price, you don't have to do anything. So, you'll get the 5.09 starting in August, and that opt-out window will run for 21 days. I think we have it ending on July 13th. So, anybody who doesn't opt out, so 5.09 for the two years, there are no termination fees. So, if somebody decides they want to shop, they're free to do so, they can leave anytime they want. If they get a letter next month and they say, you know what, I don't, I don't want to do it now, but then two months from now, they say, okay, I want to do it, well, they can call us, call Dynegy, and they can get in at the same price. So, they can come and go as they want. So, this really has, you know, almost no financial risk, really, for anybody, because they can come and go as they want. It's also, you know, some protection, I think that's, that's one of the nice things about the aggregation, is, again, working with us and with council, you know, it gives some control over to a very, what can be a very difficult thing to decide to do as far as selecting choices. I mean, I went out to PUCO's website, so the Public Utilities Commission today to look at offers, there are hundreds of, there are hundreds of offers to choose from. We all get letters, we all get phone calls. It's like, what's the, what's the best one? Which has termination fees, which ones don't? Where this, you know, if the absolute worst case, not worst case, but if, you know, two years the program ends and council decides not to continue, it just goes back to Duke. You know, they don't roll to some artificial price. I mean, I talked to somebody today, again, to put it in perspective, .0509 is what would be on somebody's bill. I talked to somebody today, a different, actually, one of the townships, they were .16, three times higher than this price, because they decided to shop, and then, you know, didn't know when their contract ended and other things. So, that's the, one of the comforts of the aggregation. And also, too, besides that 5.09, as we like to call the traditional and the main price, those who would like to opt in to a renewable energy choice, so that would be offset by 100% renewable energy, would be able to pay 5.19 cents. So, it's about a dollar more a month for the average customer if they wanted to opt in to a 100% renewable option. So, the default would be the traditional, we call it, you know, again, traditional kind of brown energy, and those who would like to pay a premium for renewable energy can do that as well at 5.19, same terms. I know I said a lot, threw out a lot of numbers, so please, if you have questions.
Any questions? Mr. Bunsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I was hoping that you could explain, how is the city able to get, you know, when you operate as our energy consultant for our city buildings, how is the city able to get the .0417? But when we do the aggregation, the cost is more, I'm sure there's a reason.
Yeah, so a lot of it, I think the analogy I use a lot of times is, it's not as if we all use, I mean, we probably all use toothpaste the same way, right? Like, would it cost somebody to manufacture toothpaste for you, or you, it's probably very similar. But how you use energy as a person and as your home is very different than, you know, how you may use energy, or how the facilities, I mean, they're on, in most cases, probably pretty close 24 hours a day, some of that's offset by the lighting districts, which are very cheap. I mean, a lighting district by itself is typically sub 4 cents. So, the facilities and lighting, their cost from the market is significantly cheaper than a residential, because of just how, you know, the fluctuation, it's a supply-demand thing. So, you know, residential customers, their load moves a lot throughout the day, you know, you go to sleep, it turns on and off. Where you find facilities go pretty flat, and especially lighting, it's very much known, so there's not a lot of risk for pricing the premium of lighting. So, again, it's just the, what's called the load shape or the load factor of the facilities and lighting compared to a residential home.
Got you. Thank you so much. Yep, thank you so much. So, another question, do you know what is the current Duke price to compare, so like, basically, if we didn't do this, do you know what the current one is?
Yeah, so, I looked at, actually, the last, you know, since the program has started, it was about 5.6 cents, if somebody would have been with Duke from the start of the program back in August of 2017. Duke just recently updated their rates, so I actually took the last 12 months of usage and forecasted the next 12 months, and we're forecasting, based on Duke's rates as of today, to be about 5.33.
Okay, and then, I appreciate that.
And again, I'm sorry, that was for, that's for the residential customers, like we can say aggregation.
That's a good point. And what was the current aggregation price?
5.39.
5.39, good. So, one of the things that, like, I guess I felt like that we've had trouble getting is reports from Energy Alliance on our savings. You know, in the past, Mr. Dieter, is, does he still with your company?
Yep, he's, I'm here because he's actually on vacation today, so yes.
I would just say, he's not great at getting the reports to us when we ask for them, however, hopefully, that's in the past, but if you could maybe pass the message along that, I think it would really be good to get at least annual reports for the city, so that we can advertise to our citizens how much they're actually saving because of aggregation. And just for residents that may not understand, I mean, so, the council, two councils ago, basically passed an ordinance to put aggregation on the ballot, because essentially, I got happen to me exactly what you're saying happened to that person you talked to today, that I was on a contract that expired, and I went to .129 cents per kilowatt-hour. So, in order to prevent, our residents want to make sure they're getting the best rate, but we want to make sure, well, it's hard to get the best rate, because if your contract expires, you may not know it, you may not know that they're jacking your rates up as soon as that happens. So, these reports are going to help just to make sure that residents know that they are getting a good rate and they are saving money. They don't need to go to the apples-to-apples website, because if you do that, you can really get screwed by some of these companies when they do jack your rates up when it's up. So, yeah, as long as we get the reports, yeah, I'm good with what you have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsel. Mr. Kelch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious as to why initially this program is to, for residents to opt out, rather than send them information for them to opt in if they so choose? Because to me, it just doesn't pass the smell test of, you know, if it's such a good deal, it's such a good program, you'd read the letter and you'd want to go sign up for it, versus looking at your bill months later and you're already in it.
Yeah, so, the reason that it is an opt-out, again, it's economies of scale, right? Typically, from a supplier, you can get a much better price by taking, you know, hundreds or thousands of residents and putting them together compared to one. And a lot of that really is their margin. So, I'll say, when I was running one of the retail businesses on the residential side, I mean, the average customer, it took us anywhere from $120 to $1,000 per, you know, to just say acquire you as an individual customer. That doesn't happen, you know, in the aggregation, you end up bringing, you know, thousands of people at one time. So, that economy of scale really does cut down the, you know, really, their margin of it to be able to offer pretty good rates.
Any further questions? Mr. Bunsel?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that, too. So, the voters, you know, had to approve that opt-out program, so, and also, the point of it, too, is that there's a lot of confusion with this, with this energy stuff, and if you had to keep opting in to the program, it would just create a lot more complexity to the program for the citizens, when the citizens are getting lower energy rates than they would have. And so, I know for me, I don't under, like, it took me a while to understand this energy stuff, and I know for a lot of people, it's hard to understand, it's very complex. So, I think the council at the time chose the opt-out, so that we could just make sure we get our seniors on it, we can get everybody on it, we can make sure that, you know, everybody's saving money.
And if I can make one more point about that, or I guess two points, as well as people opting in, I mean, the numbers from the Public Utilities Commission show that in the Duke footprint, only roughly 25% of people who are, who are with a retail supplier have done it by choice. Most of them are through aggregation programs. So, even if it was an opt-in program, we would only say that one in four people in the city would actually ever do something to even take advantage of that rate. You just don't see a lot of people doing it, because, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of choices, there's a lot of uncertainty, people just don't do it. So that's, again, where the aggregation works, works well, to be able to offer that. But I still will say, you know, people should look at it. And even though it's an opt-out program, they should still read the letter, they should still read the terms and conditions. I mean, I've said that there's no termination fees, there's other, but people should still understand what they're, you know, what they're getting into and then understand what that is.
Anyone else? Any further questions?
Thank you.
Moving on to L3. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to sign an electrical service agreement with DynaG Energy Services East LLC to provide retail power to the city of Norwood.
July 2020.
To July 2022. To July 2022. Thank you very much. And declaring emergency. Mr. Bonsell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we have all three readings of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsell. Motion by Mr. Bonsell. Mr. Brayden.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Please hold.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Geraci?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings?
Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to sign an electric service agreement with DynaG Energy Services East LLC to provide retail power to the city of Norwood from July 2020 to July 2022 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to sign an electric service agreement with DynaG Energy Services East LLC to provide retail power to the city of Norwood from July 2020 to July 2022 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to sign an electric service agreement with DynaG Energy Services East LLC to provide retail power to the city of Norwood from July 2020 to July 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonsell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bonsell. Mr. Brayden?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Please hold.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Geraci?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. The ordinance passes.
June 2021 to June 2022.
Item L5. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to sign an amendment with DynaG Energy Services East LLC to extend the governmental electric power aggregation from June 2021 to June 2022 for a traditional energy aggregate aggregation product not to exceed the price of 5.09 cents per kilowatt hour and additional customer opt-in renewable energy aggregation product not to exceed the price of 5.29 per kilowatt hour and declaring an emergency. May I have a motion? Mr. Thompson?
We have all three readings.
Motion by Mr. Thompson. We have all three readings. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion?
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Geraci?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. The motion passes. We have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to sign an amendment with DynaG Energy Services East LLC to extend the governmental electric power aggregation from June 2021 to June 2022 for a traditional energy aggregate product not to exceed the price of 5.09 cents per kilowatt hour and an additional customer opt-in renewable energy aggregation product not to exceed the price of 5.29 cents per kilowatt hour and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to sign an amendment with DynaG Energy Services East LLC to extend the governmental electric power aggregation from June 2021 to June 2022 for a traditional energy aggregate product not to exceed the price of 5.09 cents per kilowatt hour and an additional customer opt-in renewable energy aggregation product not to exceed the price of 5.29 cents per kilowatt hour and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to sign an amendment with DynaG Energy Services East LLC to extend the governmental electric power aggregation from June 2021 to June 2022 for a traditional energy aggregation product not to exceed the price of 5.09 cents per kilowatt hour and an additional customer opt-in renewable energy aggregation product not to exceed the price of 5.29 cents per kilowatt hour and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Donardo. Second by Mr. Thompson. Any further discussion?
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Geraci?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. The ordinance passes. Moving on to item administrative reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I'm going to make this brief. Actually, I'll do it sort of by, by my highlighted numbers here, which is COVID-19 is, COVID-19 is still active and we're still working through all of that stuff. They're still doing tracing in the city of Norwood. There's still 11 cases that are under investigation and we're watching it. So don't, you know, it seems like there's been, you know, of course, the focus has moved away from COVID-19, but it's still there and we need to recognize that. The swim pool opens up on Saturday, this Saturday. There's been postings on Facebook and emails that have went out to the list, so there are some requirements for COVID-19 with that, and they are changing. We, we've implemented everything that the health departments asked for, and they're ever-changing. So we don't have a, we don't have a set in stone, published set of COVID-19 criteria for that, but it's, it's there. It'll be quite visible all over the pool area, so recognize that's, that's going on. So that opens Saturday morning, or Saturday at noon. The parks are opened back up. We, we are working on guardrails at, on the Norwood lateral and all over the place. We're trying to get the guardrails back in shape. Of course, Saturday, we had an accident, and of course, the car ended up landing on top of a guardrail. So we have another smushed guardrail on the Norwood lateral. So it is a never-ending job there of trying to get the guardrails back in shape. The surplus auction website is, is, has been up. That's a Hamilton County surplus auction website, but we have, the city of Norwood has a lot of different materials on that website now. So looking, if you're looking, look at the Hamilton County surplus auction website. They, we talked briefly about PEAP, which is the Public Employees Assistant Program, Assistance Program. That was one of the first things I signed into in January. We had to renew that agreement, and a letter went out to all of the city of Norwood employees with information on how to utilize PEAP. So that is, that is, you know, if you're having problems with alcohol, or you're having mental issues, or you're just having problems, that is a counseling agency that's out there, and it is a service that's provided by, by the city of Norwood to all of our employees. So PEAP is there for them to use. When we talk about the mental health stuff, we talk about going through the COVID-19 stuff. And as we've had our Monday meetings for our interdepartmental meetings, I continue to stress to all of our, all of our leaders, the superintendent of public works, the chiefs, all of them, to keep an eye on our, our staff and make sure that we're doing okay. Because this is, this has been an extremely, six months of extreme high stress for me and everybody. It's not just, you know, people that are trying to make things happen around the city, but everybody's had a huge amount of stress. So that is something that we've talked about and discussed within the city administration and tried to reinforce, like, let's really do that. The street sweeper was out front, and hopefully, somebody got to see it. It's been out, it's been out on the street, talking to the street sweeper operator, Theo Baca. He said that thing will, it pulls the gravel up. It's a totally different type of, it's a conveyor system with the brushes. You can see, it's much wider. We're going to have to give it a little more room, but he said it'll turn on a dime. So the street sweeper's here, and that's great. Policies and procedures. The four elected offices that, that are the mayor's office, the law director, the auditor, and the treasurer are working on that personnel policies and procedures. And we had another Facebook meeting with Clemmons and Nelson. We all sort of have our, our marching orders. So Ken, you'll be happy to hear, we're working on that, because that's one of your directives, is for us to get that stuff together. So we continue to work on that. Staffing, if you look at the budget numbers that the auditor's office sends out, we're under, on all of our, we're under budget on all the staffing. We still have some positions that need to be filled, and as, as we're moving forward, we'll, we'll look at that. But we are watching that, and we're watching the budget very closely for some of those indicators that, and I'm sure the finance committee's talked about it also, but that budget is very, very important to us, and it is being watched closely. The newsletters, the newsletters went out, the website comes out at the beginning of the month. See Click Fix, which is the app we're looking at, there's another supplier that does that same type of service. We're still looking at that and evaluating maybe which service we can go through there. And then I'll, I'll finish with two things. One is the tree planting. Keep Norwood Cool, Dana Bull had, I think, over 50, maybe 55 trees go out within the city of Norwood in the last week and week and a half. I've planted my fresh new baby, it's a red, blazing red maple in my front yard. It's a beautiful, actually, they're really beautiful trees that they, they provided. So Dana Bull's got that Keep Norwood Cool stuff going. And then the last part is the census. Don't forget about the census. Please talk to your neighbors and friends. If you're anyplace and you have a chance, or just for a second, think about it, ask people, have they completed the census? Because it's important to the city of Norwood. That, that grant, the $30,000 planning grant, is the foundation for other grants that we will apply for. As they bring information and say, this is what we need to be doing, we build off of that planning grant and we ask for other grants. And the fact that we've got that one, that, that's the start of a process for other grants that will help us really redevelop that whole corridor, Montgomery Road, and it will make its way north clearly as we move along. But that, getting that grant is really, is the start. It's a foundation of, of some really good stuff for the city of Norwood. That's it. I'm sorry, that wasn't that brief, was it?
It's pretty good. Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Mr. Geraci?
Well, I guess I'll, I'll start with the COVID numbers. You said there's 11 being investigated, correct? Which means 11 of those could come out negative. However, if we're looking at 11 that come out positive, we're looking at .00057% of the city, which is absolutely nothing of our residents having been infected by this COVID process. So I know certain residents are afraid of this COVID, and we canceled a bunch of events because of this COVID. But it's not showing in the city that, that it's, it's absolutely destroying our city. I just wanted to put that point out there and that, that, you know, we, we could still be doing our events.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, for that update. Appreciate that. I just got a few comments. First thing that comes to mind is those 13 or 11 residents, they probably don't think that. The ones that are, you know, actually diagnosed, they probably think a little differently than that. However, I, my comment wanted to be that for your first six months and how busy you've been, and, and I've been noticing as I navigate my way on and off the lateral and in and out Norwood and in city hall, it, it looks really nice as far as getting on and off 562. I see the work being done by Public Works and, you know, at your, at your leadership. When I walk into city hall, I notice that it smells very nice, it's being cleaned, and it's, it's just tidy, and everything looks really nice. So I'm just, I want to commend that, I see the work that's being done in the past six months, it's a whole lot of it. And there was something else, but that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Bonsell?
Thank you so much. So just two questions. When it comes to the guardrails on the lateral and people, motorists damage it, I mean, what is the city, are the city doing anything to try to go after those insurance companies or the motorists for the damages?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely. On Saturday, I sent a text immediately to the safety service director with the challenge saying, I want that guardrail fixed by the end of this month, and I want the invoice out to the insurance company that should be paying for that guardrail. So we might not be able to recoup the funds immediately, but we start chasing that right away. So, yeah, there's, if you're damaging property like that, we're going after the insurance to try to recoup that money. Yes.
That's great. And that's, yeah, that's been an issue in the past, I think, a little bit lax on that. So that's great that you're all going after that. The other items around COVID-19, so the health department has changed the way that they report that out. It used to be that they would just, they would report out the total cases and then the number of probable cases, or the number of cases that are currently, like, happening right now. And now they're not reporting out the total cases. I think they're reporting potentially like new cases in June, but I just was curious, what's the impetus for changing it? I mean, if the number is so small anyway, is that it's insignificant according to a prior council member? Was that your direction to change that? Was that Brian, the interim health director's thing? Was that Gina's? I guess I'm just curious, who changed it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I talked to Gina and said, how much time, what are, it seems like you're sending out the exact same information day after day after day after day. And I asked her to start providing me the mayor's report on Tuesdays and Fridays, because I didn't want to, I didn't see a reason for her to put together the exact same thing every time. Now, she looked at, at the way she was putting out some of that information and made a change, probably based upon my, you're sending out the exact same stuff every day, what's, what can you, you know, how can you speed it up? So there, there was a change made there, but it was more, it was, I don't, I think it's just a more of a matter of convenience and timing, less effort at something that's repetitive and maybe not necessary.
Sure. Quick follow-up. So, no, and I think changing it to twice a week, totally great. I mean, that makes total sense, many days that the numbers were the same. I just, and I think the report is much simpler in other ways, not just by the total number not being there. But I would just say that it's, I mean, I get residents that ask me, and then I've had a resident that said that they actually called the health department and asked them, hey, well, what's the total number? And the health department wouldn't give it to them. And so I don't know why we're not providing that number. I mean, we have a local health department, and one of the values I feel like of having a local health department is that we can get data, like, from the department about Norwood. Maybe not specific areas in Norwood, but at least for our city. So I would just encourage, if we can, to change that report back to at least include just the total number of confirmed cases that we've had since the start. And I think citizens know that it's, that it's not increasing, like, as dramatically as we might have thought it would have increased. So, but it's still, it's just a number that a lot of people benchmark, and I've gotten a couple of emails about that, and I just think it could be good. So I'll just ask that you consider that. And, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsell. Anyone else? Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I lost my train of thought. So I wanted to pay those compliments before my last statement and I also wanted to ask if possibly, if, you know, I wanted to commend Public Works and the works that they're doing because I see that and notice that. I also wanted to ask if maybe there was a pothole plan, maybe if we have a truck full of asphalt that instead of just fixing the potholes that maybe that are called in, do we travel around the city to find the ones and say, hey, there's a pothole, I found one, can we just throw some black top in there and put some sealer down? So is there a plan to go out and seek these potholes or do we just fill the ones that people report? I'd like to see us just actively going after them and hitting those before they're reported. Can you give us an update, maybe, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure. One of the, one of the things that they're doing now is Clint, the Superintendent of Public Works is looking, working on the trailer, the specification for a pothole trailer which heats the asphalt and does a better job filling the potholes. So that is something that we should have in place within the next, I'll say, within the next month. The, the way that they're going out is they do hit reported potholes first, they'll go out and hit those and then they hit areas. And I did talk to him about a more systematic approach, making sure that he's getting, we're getting more information. Part of that is the See Click Fix. I talked about that application, that app. It actually has a work order system on it. So See Click Fix is something, is an app that you put on your phone. If you see a pothole, you can actually take a picture of it and then it gives a map and you can actually pinpoint that pothole as a citizen. That goes back to Public Works and that's a way for us to start recording where potholes are, the timeline that it took to fill a pothole, when it gets filled, they click on it so that it's filled. So all of those things are part of tracking it. But you're right, we need, and I think he is working on a system, more of a systematic approach to make sure that we're hitting all the potholes in each ward each time and not just sort of focusing, you know. We do a lot of firefighting when it comes to potholes and we really need to get better, more to a reactive or proactive and less reactive.
Can I follow up, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So I just wanted to tie that in with the compliments because I see the work that they're doing. So I don't want to act like I'm asking above and beyond what they're doing because I see the work that they're doing. So I didn't, I want to make sure I clarify that I see the hard work, the public work they're doing and I'm asking for above and beyond. So I just want to make sure I clarify that. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Thompson.
A question to the mayor, please. Had a resident reach out to me just about the timing on Indian Mound repaving. I just wondered if you could update us on that. I think we were going to do it earlier in the year.
Is the Safety Service Director still here? Would you mind if the Safety Service Director talks there? Because he's the guy on, on streets and all that.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor, members of council and our guests. Currently, we're waiting for the state to fund the grant which was applied for and we received. As citizens call all the time about it, until that happens, we're patching potholes. What we don't want to do is what's happened in the past is be paving too late in the season, like happened before Highland, part of it came up and part of section came up because of improper or untimely application of the asphalt at the wrong time of the year. I explained that to the mayor and unfortunately with COVID and the state budget, it is behind. But as soon as they fill the grants and our engineer, Mr. Godey advises, we're ready to go, then the contractor, of course, will be contacted and will be ready to go. Indian Mound especially is going to take a lot of work with the catchments. You're going to get people calling about the trees. Most of the trees will have to come down, especially the real dead ones, maybe not little ones, but they're going to have to come down because once they sever the roots to put the curving in and the catchments, the tree will eventually fall down. All the residents that have big trees have been notified about that and have had their chance. None of them are unhappy that the tree is going to come down. Most of them don't like them anyway. So as soon as the state moves to fill the grant request for the funding, we'll be able to tell you when we're going to be able to start on the paving project. As Mr. Sanchar said last year, take a vacation during the summer on Indian Mound, Wakefield and Farmleigh because it's going to be a mess. Unfortunately, COVID-19 came in.
Can I, I have to interrupt because it's, take a vacation in the fall. It's not going to be the summer.
Yeah.
We pretty much know that already. But our goal is still to move forward with Indian Mound, Sheridan, Wakefield. Those are the three main ones. Our goal is to make that happen this year, absolutely. But we do have some constraints.
Quick follow-up. If for some reason because of delay in funding or weather cools off and it's not the right time, does the grant carry over to next year and will be able to pave next year?
I believe we should. It's money awarded to us. It would just be a timing factor when people were, you know, kind of hoping for relief this year and all of a sudden because of the situation we find ourselves in, we can't. So I'm going to speak to John Godey at JMA Engineering tomorrow and find out if we're any closer to resolution or actually work being started.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, thank you so much for being here. Can I ask a question to the Safety Service? Thank you so much. Okay, so I did check our appropriations today and we had, I mean, a little bit over a million dollars in the street fund. There was, well, actually it was like 1.4, but then there was so much appropriate, so much already encumbered. Long story short is, what are we doing to start queuing up additional projects? We've got money in the bank for street projects. Are we working on trying to secure additional grants or do additional dollars? This could be something for council as well, but I mean, the city administration ultimately is the one that's going to have to recommend what.
Well, sadly, my experience as the police chief 20 years ago with grant writing, the grants that we should have been using this year should have been written last summer. Mr. Perry is doing a yeoman's job finding some grants, but this time of the year, finding new money for grants can be very tricky. As far as amounts of grants, they also, many of them require matching funds, which I don't know that are in our budget this year and/or a pledge of we will provide such and such equipment to do this. I have been busy with the roofs, gutters, windows, all our major air conditioning units on our city building. So there's a lot going on, but quite frankly, it is not that I am aware of or doing anything on the street projects other than what's already been appropriated or suggested that we can do. And I've been leery to, example, there's money for parking meter heads in there and I'm really leery to go out and start buying parking meter heads when most of the offices where we put them aren't at work, the people are working from home. So I'm wanting more guidance, I think, in July or late June when they reassess the budget. But there's money technically there, but what's really going to be used, especially with some of the projects that are coming in close or a little over what has been appropriated.
Mr. Thompson. Yeah, I do have a question, but.
We do have quotes for the asphalt and sealing at City Hall and at all the other buildings, so the Police Department, the different parking lots, the city municipal parking lots and the Health Department. So we have, we have quotes for that and we just really need to let those go. That is something, when you talk about that, that's something that's been brought up is all the damage on Montgomery Road from the buses and driving along on some of the curb lanes. And years past, we've had the, they've been road milled and we've taken small sections or portions of Montgomery Road and made repairs where they were necessary. It's typically what that kind of work, the small repair work that is done, is done when there is another project going on and you can sort of piggyback that onto those projects. But you're right, Mr. Thompson, we need to start looking at some of those areas that need to be taken care of sooner than later and I'll make that a priority, that we start working more on a couple of those areas that are terrible. I know that Mr. Perry has, Tom Perry has looked at some of the areas in front of, like Siemens on Forest Avenue is absolutely terrible right now. We had a conference call with PACOR and we were talking about some of the asphalt around their area, which is really not that bad, quite frankly. But we will look at some of those areas because there's, there are some streets that still we could probably put on the agenda that are not right now.
Mr. Thompson. Thank you so much. So I just want to make sure that we are, I mean, the previous councils, we've done everything we could to make sure there's money for streets because we used to spend a lot of time and effort or a lot of our money on salaries. We've gotten rid of those salaries out of the street fund. So the street fund should be for capital improvements and, you know, the complaint that residents always have is, oh, there's going to be, when streets get paved, a lot of times they get paved, they say, I don't know if this is actually true, but right before an election. And I don't want to see us all of a sudden hurry right before the next election to get a few streets paved and then make it look like that, hey, look, we're just doing this because of the election, when literally the money's been sitting in there the whole time. The second part is that if we need matching funds for anything, I mean, I think we, I'm pretty sure there are funds available, there are appropriations available, but if there are not, we can change the plan for the street fund and make sure that they are available. So I guess if the matching funds is the issue, definitely please communicate to us. But I just want to make sure again, just like that we are moving forward with trying to get street projects done because there is some money there. So whether that be moving forward with the street plan or moving forward with just identifying certain projects and working on applications, like I just want us to keep moving forward because we haven't had the street money before and we have it there and, you know, there was many comments today when somebody posted about the new street sweeper and people were like, no, we don't need a street sweeper, we need a street paver. And it's like you can kind of understand because it does feel like, you know, people are not seeing a lot of progress. So I know you're working hard and I've spent a lot of stuff, I just wanted to make sure we don't let up on those streets. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Grayson.
Question to the Safety Service Director?
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure that we have contacted MSD and Duke and for the streets that we're going to be paving, make sure that there's, they got nothing planned for the next several hundred years, those streets, because it never fails, we get one paved and then they come through cutting them up. So just want to make sure that we're checking on that.
We discussed that with Mr. Godey and Cincinnati's been bedeviled by that problem for years. I think I've, in my time with the city, has heard the number of safety directors and mayors fuss about, we turn around and do this, but then your project was led after ours and you come and put gas mains in or there's a water main break, which is a classic, or a gas leak. So it is difficult to do and Mr. Godey helps us with that. MSD, you know, in front of my own houses, you know, they sank a foam pole into the sewer because they didn't call before you dig and it took two years to flood my neighbor's house and that pole was just put in by a subcontractor. If they don't do their work, which caused then the giant street to be dug up and all that good stuff because of that. And I asked MSD, well, will you sue Duke? And they said, no, because we'll make a mistake next week and then they won't sue us. But that didn't help the city of Norwood with 14 days Williams Avenue shut down because of negligence. So I agree with what your premise is and I'll speak to Mr. Godey and our engineer will reach out and say, now, are we sure? He's not going to do something after we put this street in and they won't give you a guarantee. They'll say, or they'll say, well, I don't, it's not in the plan. Well, then somebody else might have a plan that they didn't communicate. So we're going to be sure, hopefully that won't happen, Gavin.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Thank you, Mr. Grayson. Anyone else? Mr. Kelsch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to ask the mayor if there's been any update on Elm Avenue storm sewer study? Have we gotten a hold of MSD? Have we moved forward with that at all?
It's in the same process as, as our grant for our other, I mean, challenged, challenging to get information from MSD. So, and that was, that's part of the research that JMA was working on so we can, when Safety Service Director Murphy talks to him tomorrow, he can reinforce that we want that done sooner than later. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Kelsch.
I can say part to that. Have we looked at any sort of like funding options or grant opportunities or anything that would help with that and to be kind of proactive?
On the Elm Avenue sewer project?
Yes.
No, I have not looked at any storm water, no.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of on the same line, so with the water study that council approved this year, up to, you know, $230,000, I think, do we have a, just, has there been progress made on that and do we have a timeline for when we think that might be completed?
Timeline stays the same. It should be, that should be coming out in early fall, end of summer, early fall. My understanding is that engineering and different reports are being formulated at this time. We do have a conference call with the EPA on Thursday to go over some of the different actions that they want to complete, but they recognize that it all is sort of dependent upon this study that we've started. So I'm not sure how the EPA will go.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Grayson.
Mr. Mayor, you had commented in your report about, you know, we're still working on the policies and procedures and working with the firm that works with that. In that, have we encouraged some types of diversity training with all of our employees? We talked about it before with the Police Department, but with, regardless of what department it is, are we trying to instill some of that in all the departments?
Mr. Mayor.
No. Right now, we are, you know, I would say it's baby steps, but it is a giant leap forward just to get a policies and procedures manual in place. And I don't disagree with you that that is an important aspect of it and needs to be in place. There are so many, as we have these conversations, there are so many areas that you take a note because you recognize how important that is. Just, just instilling and installing all the different forms that we need and the criteria to run the city properly is what we're trying to get in place. And policies and procedures that we have that we can adopt and get in there are all part, a big part of it. Those areas, I mean, putting together a training budget and training for each department is sort of what the policy standards are for those is another area. So it will be, but it's, it's a little bit down the road. That might be next year towards this time, you know?
One more. Oh, good.
Thank you. Just to comment on that, there are provisions in there for training on anti-discrimination issues, on harassment issues, but there's nothing on kind of what is more along the lines of what you're talking about. But it's being pulled from, here's kind of standard municipal policies. So that's the place we're starting and trying to get all that straightened out. And just, it's 160 pages without the forums. So, right, and that's the first draft. So that's what we're working on now. So there are provisions in there as far as the legal, what would be a legal requirement, would get the city in trouble as far as a discrimination thing to look out for, for harassment issues and things like that. But there isn't a kind of cultural sensitivity component called out in the policy manual at this point. But it's something that I think, especially after the last several weeks, will move more to the forefront.
Mr. Grayson.
Mr. Mayor, you talking about the COVID thing and it seems like we're on the tail end of that. We've opened City Hall, we've opened the pools and parks and everything else. When can we go home? You know, as much as I like having a big table to be able to spread all our stuff out, it's hot in here. It's not been comfortable for anybody sitting in here. I appreciate the schools giving us this, you know, but it's time to go home and get back into the ball.
Still limited to 10 and we had more than 10 in here today.
Do you think that we can work on asking the school district to program in our AC? I think there's probably just a programmatic thing that we don't have air conditioning right now, so.
Still yet, it's.
I know, it's not the most comfortable, but I mean, I do think though, like when we have days like today where we have a lot of citizens that were here and I appreciate you all being here and with us. I mean, I would, I think it's probably safer for them to be here, but it'd be definitely a lot more comfortable if we had some AC for them.
Wow. Just want to go home.
I know. I hear you. I actually, I hear you.
Mr. Grayson.
I'm going to give a shout out to everybody that stayed in this hot atmosphere listening to us. Bravo to you guys.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
The microphones don't work for sitting back there. I don't know how our citizens feel, but it's very hard to hear some of you back there because these things are on.
Well, there's no monitor. I asked for that before so we could hear each other because it's tough to hear.
Yeah. I mean, I see the wires, but it's back there, it's impossible to hear.
Yeah, this is just for the TV right now, but potentially maybe they could look at it.
Yeah, if we could just put a monitor in here where everybody could hear, unless every, we start passing out what Mr. Brayden has. I see it on TV.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, Captain.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Moving on to item 10 of a request addressed council. We don't have any. Item, oh, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
I think after.
Do we have, do we have another address?
Thank you.
You were speaking on the desk. Oh, I thought you missed that one. Sorry for the miscommunication.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, Norwood, Ohio. It's very difficult. I know we've had history. I know many of you, when I show up, you think I'm going to dump a table on your head. I want to drop kick you behind the drapes. But really and truly, what I want to do is give God glory. When I have done things wrong, I've tried my best to apologize. Yes, do I still have issues with some of our city folk? You better believe it. But folks, I took a long time before I started addressing the latest going on in our country. But I was recently in contact with about 14 individuals that said, Reverend James, what are we going to do? And I said, we're going to stay at home. They said, no, man, we can't do that. And I said, well, let me tell you something. You come to my neighborhood, I'm going to whip your behind, in front of your mama, in front of your cousin. Because this community deserves every opportunity to grow away from our, the ghosts that continue to haunt us. But folks, let's not get this thing twisted. You know, I told folks, I said, but don't worry, I'm going to show you how far we've come, I'm going to have this thing recorded and I'm going to make sure you see it. I wouldn't show this to a dead man. You see, we have things that need to be addressed and that's true enough. But it's the stuff that's right in front of us, we continue to work on programs, we continue to propel personal agendas. Now, I respect the fact that our chief was here today, I really do. I know he's busy. But I want to take time out to acknowledge our Safety Service Director that before he said anything, he acknowledged the people that were here. Folks, don't we get it? Yes, we have to have programs, but if the same people who run the same programs in our city continue to be the only ones that get the jobs, look at our city's makeup. city continue to be the only ones that get the jobs, look at our city's makeup. Look at our community coalitions. Look at all of the groups that are doing anything in this community. They're the same people. They think alike, they act alike, they talk alike. And it's nice to applaud and say, woo-hoo, $30,000, woo-hoo. My wife and I promoted pro boxing shows. Some of you who are here can remember. We agreed to do a show and donate 100% of the proceeds, minus paying the athletes and whatnot. Not one. In 2015, I presented a 13-point plan. If you look at that 13-point plan today, oh, a lot of it's happening, but the reason there's a lot of anger is because you don't identify and recognize those. Go to those community groups and see who's not at the meetings. If you want to think I'm a mad guy, I might be, but I love this community and I love you. But we've got to stop always saying, great job. I think it's real easy to see, our new mayor, he's a Caucasian guy. Me, I'm a black guy. Yet I truly believe we could sit down and we can have an intelligent conversation. We may not always agree, but at the end of the day, I think he will hear me and desire to actually hear me. But guys, if we keep giving all the money and all the opportunities to the same people, you're going to have people like me who are dog angry about that. Give new people an opportunity. You don't believe me, go to all of these meetings. Who's missing in these meetings? You might have some people of color, but they're politically inclined and they're working with the same people that do all the other work. You mean to tell me you don't know that Kirsten James has two major degrees, one of the most intelligent people in our community, but yet never gets asked if she's interested in a job? And everyone's supposed to sit back and just say nothing? I understand you have a political agenda, but Mr. Mayor, you said we have positions available. I want to challenge, my man. Let's open the door of opportunities so that people can really see it. Let's share economic inclusion so people can see it. I think we should all have an all-committee meeting and I think you guys should invite in people like me that may not always smile at you, but I think like our law director, I think he can agree. If I'm wrong, I'm going to change it. None of us are perfect, but we cannot continue to propel personal agendas over people.
Mr. James, 37.
I want us to talk about economic inclusion. We have African-American business owners that deserve a seat at the table. And when that happens, I'll come to every one of your meetings thereon. And all I can say is, if a business owner wanted to have a voice, what would they probably say? Drop it like it's hot. Help us to move forward. I said I was going to do my best to honor that, that rule. I don't want the buzzer to go off. Guys, let's work together, but we're talking about things that are important, but really, we're missing the stuff that's behind the scenes that's happening. Let's come together and sit down and let's talk about what's making people angry right here in Norwood. God bless you all. I do love you. I really do. But it's time for change. Continue change. And don't get that twisted. Sure, King. God bless you all. If you have any questions for me, I'm here, but if not, I don't want that buzzer to go off. God bless Norwood and we pray for the families that have gone through COVID, whether they've been recovered or not. We pray their safety. We do pray for their safety. Oh, you got a question?
So I guess he kind of made a point that I was kind of baiting around the bush earlier about was when I was asking questions about the Norwood Together grant, you know, I was kind of upset because I'm looking at Norwood Together and they seem to be focusing on one area of the city and one area only, and it always seems to be Norwood Together. I don't see any of the other groups that I hear about coming forward or even getting acknowledged or recognized to even come forward to attempt something like this. I want to see that. And that's where my frustration came in earlier when I was asking the questions because I look at Norwood Together and I see them focusing on one area of the city, not the entire city in a, as a whole. And it's frustrating to me that we don't, we have this one singular group that seems to be doing everything and gets everything. I want to find out if we got other groups within the city that want to do the same as Norwood Together.
Amen.
And I want to see them have a seat as well.
Thank you, Pastor James. Did you have the other, did you fill out two or just one?
Just the one, that's why I was trying to address it. Okay, thank you, Stan. God bless you all. Let's get together.
Thank you, Pastor James.
We don't have to hold up a sign, but let's kneel together. Moving on to item O, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on committee of the whole. Are we having that Thursday?
Yes.
We never got a time.
What time? 7:30, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we are having.
It wasn't a meeting. Yeah, 7:30. Do we have the agenda tomorrow?
Do you know what the, is the agenda tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll send it to you first thing in the morning.
Follow up on that. The committee of whole, since this is our first one, I had put in for committee of whole a while back about I was having to sit down with the school board.
I've talked to Mr. Atwood and because of what's happened the past couple months, we haven't been able to do it, but in fact, I just spoke to him last week about it again.
All right, that'd be good. I'd like to place in the committee of whole what is for us, what, no disregard, I'll do that on a new business, my bad.
Any other unfinished business?
No, thank you, Mr. President. So the Streets Committee met in the past to talk about street calming on Quatman Avenue, really street calming throughout the city. I just didn't know if there was a follow-up on the Quatman Avenue street calming or if there's going to be another committee meeting anytime soon. I guess that's through the chair to the chair of the Streets Committee.
Mr. Braden?
Sure, thank you. Appreciate that, yeah. So that's, that's an ongoing process that discussions are being made and we can make a, we can, I can call for another committee meeting if, if there's some issues that you'd like to bring up and discuss and get handled, I can call for another committee meeting and I'll do so if you'd like to bring that up.
So, Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think that would be a good idea and also I just think the Streets Committee too, as just a follow-up to what I was telling the mayor, I just think that we should keep on making sure that we are moving forward with street projects, like whether you're just planning for 2021 or 2022. So I just challenge your committee, I guess I'll do a new business, but I'll challenge your committee to make sure that we're on that and that we're, we're coming up with that plan because every day I get people telling me about the streets and we all know it and I just want to make sure that we don't let that drop.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Braden, Mr. Bunsen. Any other unfinished business? Moving on to item P, new business. Any new business? Mr. Kell.
A couple things. I just want to remind you, when we do our committee reports, we need to be filling out these forms instead of just typing stuff up. I mean, these are official forms. You have to make sure we fill those out. You can always add to it and attach things to it, but this is how they should come and this is how they should be read. Just so we're, you know, we tend to get away from how things are supposed to, to happen and the proceed, policies or procedures of council and just wanted to throw that out as a reminder. Follow up.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I do want to thank some of the people that have gotten some grants and doing other things, Norwood Together, you know, getting that grant. Keep Norwood Cool for getting the trees that the mayor's done ASAP, working on some grants. So there are elevations. Ms. James is here tonight. She, she runs a, an after-school program that's absolutely phenomenal and absolutely gets zero credit. And that's one of the things Mr. James alluded to, is the fact that we have programs like this and just because they're not sponsored by the school, we're sponsored by the city, but yet probably more effective than any of those programs, gets no recognition and I want to give her recognition and for that and the kids that they have there, and it's all colors, all, all kinds. And it's, I've stopped by, I've seen them and I've seen the work they do. It's a phenomenal job. So I want to thank them and for what they do. Next. I'm sorry. And then follow up, I would like to invite Pastor James to come to a committee of a whole and us have some discussion. That way we can all discuss and it not be a sunshine hall, but if we do a committee of a whole, that we, that we can sit down and talk about economic inclusion, talk about racial inclusion, all types of those kind of things and start reaching out, not just with Pastor James, but we need to, to reach out to some of our other community leaders within our, our boundaries here to, to be able to do that as well. And committee of a whole would be the best avenue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Any other, Mr. Kelch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call another Parks, Rec. and Public Spaces meeting for Wednesday, June 17th, if that's okay with everybody else on the committee?
7:30?
7:30.
What committee was that?
Parks. Parks, Recreation and Public Spaces. Mr. Dracy, does that work for you? Wednesday 17th, 7:30?
What time is that, Mr. Kelch?
7:30.
At the high school?
We can meet at the council chamber.
I don't think we're allowed to.
Not to?
It's too bad.
Yeah, we'll be here.
Not funny, I guess.
Any other new business?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanted to respond to, I guess, previous assertions that, you know, criticisms of, you know, a certain group in Norwood Together that I continually keep hearing on this floor. So, I mean, in my opinion, I don't know of any other group that was going to come forward with the economic development plan and with the grant proposal that Norwood Together came forward with and has partnered with the city on. From my understanding, Norwood Together has been, you know, open to pretty much everybody to come to their meetings and they've tried to advertise and so I'd encourage people, if they want to get involved, to do that if that's such avenue they choose, but nobody's being forced to choose that avenue, but it's there. And also just want to counter that Norwood Together, they have, most of the, most of the stuff they do is citywide stuff. So when they do Norwood Cleanup Week and they do Clean Up The Parks, they do parks all over the city. It's not just Parks and Ward Two. I'd also just challenge that Montgomery Road stretching from Dana to the lateral encompasses all four wards, not just Ward Two, from my understanding. So there are multiple wards there too. So can, could potentially somebody come up and try to get a grant for Cartha Avenue for Montgomery Road north of the lateral? Absolutely. And I'm pretty sure the city administration, please correct me if I'm wrong, would work with them, but to continually criticize a group just because they're actually coming forward and actually getting things done, to me, to me, is frustrating. Now, it doesn't mean we shouldn't partner with other groups, but it's kind of demotivating for that group specifically who actually, like, go check their website on norwoodtogether.org, who's actually getting things done to continually be criticized because they're not doing things the right way. And so, I mean, I can't imagine other people wanting to step up if they're constantly going to be criticized because they're not doing things exactly how a certain council member wants it. So just wanted that noted, that, my objection to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bunsen. Any other new business? Any other new business? Then we'll move on to communications. We have three communications. One, we have read previously. So the first one is Q1. That is a letter from Mayor Schneider for Mayor's Court.
Letter dated June 3rd of 2020 to Mr. Ken Miracle, President and members of Norwood City Council regarding Mayor's Court fines. Dear President and members of council, enclosed, please find, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood's Mayor's Court for the month of May 2020. Please note, Mayor's Court sessions were suspended from March 19th, 2020 through June 1st, 2020. Should you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Victor Schneider.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. May I have a motion to receive and file? Mr. Kelch?
Motion received and filed.
Second by Mr. Braden. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who was the first and second?
We got Mr. Kelch first, Mr. Braden second.
Okay, Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Denardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, the motion passes. Item Q2 is a letter from the auditor's office.
Letter dated June 2nd of 2020, Norwood City Council. Dear council members, this letter still lets you know that the May monthly financial reports were emailed to each council member on June 2nd. If you have not received said email, please let me know so that I can verify your email address and also get you a copy of the reports. Sincerely, Kelly Brown, Account Clerk, Auditor's Office.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Mr. Bunsel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we receive and file the letter.
Motion by Mr. Bunsel. Second by Mr. Braden. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bunsel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, the motion passes. Item R, all members are present, so move on to item S, adjournment.